All right, I'm finally getting the hang of that. So we're gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Brian, you wanna lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, go ahead and have a moment of silence. All right, moving forward. For Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Patsy?
Thank you. I did have, I did attend the Kingston Town Board meeting. Of course, their emphasis was on the budget, and we've already approved that, so I don't want to go into that part. The week has been spent with mostly the virtual conferences with NICO, and this is our legislative conference that is being done virtually. I've been sitting on several workshops and several different things, and there are a few things that I did want to share with you. The American Rescue Plan, of course, that we talked about, and the amount the counties are getting, and NICO had worked so hard on that to be sure that the counties would get that directly. So there's a lot of things on that coming up. But a couple of things I did want to share. One was a speaker, Grant Beebe, who is the Assistant Director for Fire and Aviation for the Bureau of Land Management. And he gave us a report on everything that had happened through the 2020 season with wildfires. And I really thought it was interesting, and that's the reason I did want to share it. He said, "This is throughout the whole country. For the fire year of 2020, there were 58,250 wildfires. And on any one day, the most firefighters that they deployed was 32,727 firefighters in one day." They did have 15 fatalities throughout the country. Nine were aviation, four were medical, and two were entrapments. But that's always a sad thing to say, of course, but we're so glad it wasn't any more than that with the number of fires that they were fighting. 1.3 million acres of greater sage grouse habitat was affected. In the Great Basin, we had 455,587 acres. And I hope this year is gonna be a whole lot better. There were some good things that they were talking about to fight that, along with, you know, the sheepgrass and such. But I won't go into all of their solutions. But the other speaker that was very interesting was Chris French, who is the Acting Under Secretary for Natural Resources and Environment, the U.S. Department of Agriculture. And he was actually talking about the new bill that they have out, which is the Great American Outdoors Act of 2020. And some of the things that that is going to do, they can identify different projects that they would like to handle. And right now, they've identified 565 that were priorities. And with that, they have $285 million that is provided through the act and an additional $100 million that's been given to them with private resources. So what they will be doing is fixing and repairing roads, facilities, trails, visitor centers. They're gonna do a lot of fuel reduction and help with the backlog on that. They have identified 80,000 miles of roads and 160,000 miles of trails. And again, they will be working with our counties. You know, it was interesting when they were talking about the visitor centers and some of the parks that were open. 80% actually of the parks were open. Of that, their visitation was up over 200% through the COVID and the folks that had been attending. And they said, "Of that, 30% of those folks had never been to a national park before." So COVID got them out, and they opened anyway through that. And that's my report. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Art?
No, I didn't have, I didn't have any meetings, but I do have a couple of comments about our last meeting. I was just kidding around with Bert when I told him to make budget as painless as possible. But you know what? You all succeeded. That was, that was a great meeting. Budget was painless.
And I even got calls on people who'd been cut that were like, "Okay, I understand why I got cut."
Yeah.
And not, "Rah!" You know, they were like, "Okay." So can't get any better than that. I did not have not.
No report.
All right, so. Staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended?
Only thing I have to report is that Lander County is currently at zero cases on COVID. And other than that, everything I have will be on the agenda or the upcoming agenda.
Very good. For public comment, for non-agendized items only. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any non-agendized items at the board meeting, if any. Any discussion of those comments at the discretion of the board. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. Again, at the discretion of the board. Resilience restrictions may be placed on public comment based upon time, place, and manner, but public comment based upon viewpoint may be restricted. Do we have any public comment? Hello, Amy? Good morning.
I'm back. Amy Nelson, for the record. Couple of things. One is, I get more and more alarmed as I learn more and more about what's happening at our federal and state level. Somehow, I got roped into working with Taking About a Bag. It's a lobbying group. And so I'm looking at legislative bills, and then I summarize and send them back to the legislators. And it is, remember, I came to you a couple of weeks ago and talked about what they're doing with curriculum and the education and the racism in mathematics and the, and the how a black teacher needs to talk to black students and a white teacher needs to talk to black. Well, the stuff coming through the legislative bodies, through these bills, drafts, are more alarming. More alarming. And so I'm just restating to you guys to be vigilant. I know you are. I'm incredibly proud of this board because there is a concerted effort to take power out of the hands of a local government. And it's happening everywhere. And this county is five steps ahead of a lot of the counties, and I'm super proud of you guys. But again, I just had one related to today's health director thing. Because again, I'm learning more than I've ever learned. Yeah, so it's SB 318, and it was so intrusive, so costly. You would've had to hire a couple additional people just to address the demands in these bills. And that's what they're doing in education. That's what they're doing in all agencies.
And unfunded.
And unfunded mandates. All of them are unfunded mandates. Some of them, I'm looking up, and it's like, I, you know, I wanna do a lot of research. I wanna look at NRS. I wanna connect it to different things. The exact same bills are, same bills, almost word for word, are in the New York Legislature and Colorado. So this isn't something that the 26-year-old sponsor of the bill, which by the way, most of those, most of those people sponsoring these bills are young kids. I'm like, "Oh, my gosh, my kids are older than them." But they are very well, you know, coordinated. So I just wanted to reinforce to you guys, thank you for what you're doing. I'm very proud of this county, and there's, there's stuff going on.
And if you can bring that information forward so we all know that that stuff like that.
Yeah, I can actually send you all the bills.
Yeah, I had no idea. We were talking yesterday, and she said what they're trying to do as far as controlling the health board. And there's a reason why. We all know what that reason is. And so I think it's very important.
Yeah, I'll send you guys that particular, my summary of it, yeah. But again, appreciate it.
You know, my opinion is that this all, this intrusion into education really started with NCLB. When NCLB was introduced, I was on the board. You and the other administrators introduced it. It was tidy. It had a bow on it. And it sounded good.
Yeah.
Where it fell apart was, they did all the testing so that they could collect data, but they didn't do the character development that Bush talked about. But this is how they've got, the federal government got in there. And if you really wanna read something disturbing, get a hold of the Promise Plan. Promises, the behaving scheme that led to Marjorie Stoneman Douglas massacre.
I'll be done. Yeah, they all look pretty. Like you said, they look like they're very promising, but there's a lot of unintended consequences and unfunded mandates. And mostly, power and control out of where it needs to be at the local level, where the voice of the people needs to be heard. Okay, so thank you.
Thank you, Amy. I do have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
I just, you folks probably know this, but I just wanted to remind you, if you didn't or did, that today is the National Medal of Honor Day. And they started giving the Medal of Honor, actually, in 1863. And since then, they have given out 3,526 medals. And some of those recipients actually received a couple different medals. Of course, the thing about a Medal of Honor means that a lot of, a lot of lives were sacrificed, usually for them to get that award. And they always, they always say that when, when they get it, that it's their comrades that they lost. But I did want you to know, I thought it was, it's a special day they do every year. Thank you.
Is this the same award that Obama gave out to Oprah and her family?
No, 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 no. This is a military.
Military one.
Our Medal of Honor, yes.
Thank you, Patsy.
Thank you very much, yes. All right, I have something. I'm gonna go back on an item that we had and touch on some information, follow-up information back from the Constitutional Sheriffs Association from the last meeting with Richard Mark. So I did some research, as I do when I find things, wanna know exactly what information is true and what is on the internet. And so I contacted Sheriff Richard Mack to speak with him to find out if any of the information that was on, of course, Wikipedia and then the Southern Poverty Law website was true because it basically said all types of horrible things about them. And he said not one thing on either one of those websites were true and that they both had to resend information. He said he has never been part of the militia, KKK, any of those, any of those organizations. Not, and I'll go a little bit further in a minute, but he said he has never been in trouble for anything racial, never hitting, poking, stabbing, slapping, ever hurting anyone in his career. And because this constitutional sheriffs, because they wanna stand for the Constitution, then all of a sudden, they are a racist group. And that's just, it's not okay that they just get classified in that because I, you don't, you're law enforcement, so you're obviously racist, and that's just not okay. And I think people need to stand up and really pay attention to how that stuff is seeping in to people's minds. Because I had calls in the community go, "What are you joining a KKK, you know, association for?" I'm like, "What are you talking about?" And so I wanna give a little bit of history on some verbiage that was used. A militia, militias were created in the 1700s by Boston to protect themselves from the British. I mean, and that was the beginning of law enforcement. Then we go to Minutemen, and then the Snowmen. And then the Clansmen are from Boston, or not from Boston, excuse me, from Scotland. And that's how they protected their property. That, they were the law enforcement in those areas. So those words have been tweaked and used by people who want to turn them in an ugly way where they're not. And that's not what those, those things are. Yes, there are the radicals out there who use those words to classify them, but that's not truly what the meaning of the word is, and they're just calling themselves something that's absolutely not true. So no, that organization is not any part of a white supremacist or anything like that. And boy, let me tell you, he lit right on fire. And I asked him, because he thought, I think he thought I was saying, "Oh, why are you a KKK?" And boy, he lit right on fire. But I let him vent, and he said, "I have never done anything in my career other than protect the community, and this is what happens because I protect the community and I follow the Constitution." And so I just wanted to make sure that that goes on record because I did not want that bad taste and that misinformation that are off the internet because if it's on the internet, it must be true. So I want to make sure that that got out of, because that's very, from somebody who worked over with law enforcement for 30 years, that it's not, that's not okay.
Well, the thing is, the Ku Klux Klan was started by Southern Democrats. The Ku Klux Klan backed Hillary Clinton in her election bid. So it's, the Democrats just keep spinning this stuff.
Well, and it's just, and it's just, it's just, it's just a bad thing altogether. And I just, but I wanted to put, you know, the correct, some correct information out there because I didn't want, you know, this organization that we've joined to automatically have a black eye when it doesn't deserve it. So any, any further public comment?
Thank you, Karen.
Mm-hmm, all right.
Muted.
All right.
Unmuted.
So consent agenda, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the board of the county commissioners with one action. Without extensive discussion, any member of the board or citizen may request that an item been taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during the meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. One, April approval of March 25th, 2020, agenda notice. Number two, approval of May 7th, 2020, special budget workshop meeting minutes. Number three, approval of January 28th, 2021, meeting minutes. Number four, approval of February 11th, 2021, meeting minutes. Number five, approval of February 25th, 2021, meeting minutes. Number six, approval of March 11th, 2021, meeting minutes. And number seven, approval of payroll change requests. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve number one, the agenda notice. Number three, the January 28th, 2021, meeting minutes. And number seven, approval of payroll change requests. I do not receive any other minutes.
I'll second.
All right. Patsy made the motion, Brian second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, for discussion of possible action to approve/disapprove the payment of bills. And with that being said, I'm going to pull out check number 211109, 211198, 2111284, and then 211194.
I'll make a motion that we approve the balance of the bills minus those four.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so.
And I'll make a motion that we now approve checks number 211109, 211198, and 2111284.
I will second that. And then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So then, I'll make a motion that we pay check number, is it 2111? Now that we have, because we have two different numbers up here as far as.
It's just 211.
Okay, 21194 for Patsy. We're gonna pull that out. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, and I'll second it. Brian made the motion, Patsy second, all in favor?
Aye.
And I do abstain. It's a personal, per diem expenses.
Okay. Moving forward, so for possible action to approve/disapprove the appointment of Troy W. Ross, M.D., as Lander County Health Officer at the hourly rate of $125 per hour, not to exceed $60,000 per year with a contract to follow and to start immediately. So do I have a motion for that?
Do we have Mr., is Mr. Ross on the phone?
Yep, we do have Troy on the phone. And I put this on here so we can get a qualified health officer in place for Lander County.
Okay.
The statute that covers this is in Containment in the Backer, and this is a two-year appointment. So it has to be done every two years unless you wanna replace it. If he can be replaced or during that two-year period if he wants to leave or something. But it's for a two-year appointment, just so you know. And the county health officer has the power to appoint a deputy health board officer.
I'd just like to point out, you have quite a resume, quite extensive.
Did everybody have a chance to review his resume?
Yeah, I wanna shake the man's hand. That's pretty darn impressive. Looks like a Dr. Peter Junior or something there.
So do we have any, anybody have any questions?
No, with that, I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of Troy W. Ross, M.D. as a Lander County Health Officer at an hourly rate of $125 per hour, not to exceed $60,000 per year with a contract to follow and to start immediately. Second.
Brian made the motion, Art second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does the doctor, does the doctor wanna say anything?
Commissioner, so now that we do have the doctors of health board, I would, he's supposed to chair this meeting from the health board forward, but since he's not here present, would you mind chairing that for this portion of the meeting?
Yeah.
And then he can all, he can speak on it, obviously, being on the phone, but I'm not sure that he was quite prepared to chair the meeting yet. We didn't know if it would be approved or not, so.
Okay, all right.
I'd like to, I'd like to welcome aboard Troy. Yeah, welcome aboard, doctor.
Thank you all. I am really looking forward to serve your communities and the county.
Very good, thank you. And I have made a few calls to him myself to pick his brain, of course. And so they've been good conversations and much appreciated, and so.
Well, I'm looking forward to meeting you, doctor. I hope you can get up here someday.
I will definitely schedule the time to get out to meet all of you in person.
All right, very good. So now we're going into, we'll go to the recess to the Board of Lander County Commissioners and convene into the meeting of Lander County Health Board composed of Lander County Board of Commissioners, Sheriff Ron Unger, Lander County Health Officer Chair. So that's where we're at right now.
So open up, open it up since you're acting as chair.
This is a little, so I'm gonna go ahead and open up this meeting.
And then open up, and then if you could read in, you do have to do summaries. You can open up three, four, five, six, and seven simultaneously.
Okay, yes, so.
But you need to read them all.
So I need to read them all in, right?
Yeah, well, yes.
Just the agenda item?
Yes.
Okay, so, all right.
You're okay.
Yeah, oh, no, I'm good. I just wanna make sure I'm doing it right, is all.
Yeah, you are.
So, so number three, for discussion and possible action to endorse Resolution 2021-04 with reference to the nutritional guidance for Lander County citizens and to make recommendations for approval to the Lander County Commissioners. Number four, Health Board for discussion and possible action to endorse Resolution 2021-05 with reference to the treatment guidance in Lander County citizens to make recommendations for approval to the Lander County Board of Commissioners. Number five, for discussion and possible action to endorse Resolution 2021-06 with reference to the testing protocol guidance for Lander County citizens and to make the recommendations for approval to the Lander County Board of Commissioners. Number six, for discussion and possible action to endorse Resolution 2021-07 with reference to the elder and disabled residents' rights guidance, Lander County citizens, and to make recommendations for approval to the Lander County Board of Commissioners. And number seven, discussion and possible action to endorse Resolution 2021-08 with reference to the vaccine information consent guidance for the Lander County citizens and to make recommendations for approval to Lander County Board of Commissioners. Okay, so we're gonna open them all at one time, so we can discuss them, so.
Now, the board, Sheriff Ron Unger is a member of the board, a voting member. So if he steps out, Robert, you need to act in that capacity, and you are a voting member of the board.
Okay. So now where are we going? How do we, you just start the conversation, or what?
Yeah, or you can ask the doctor if he has any.
Okay, doc, okay, I'm gonna ask the doctor. I want you to go ahead and start off with the information, please.
Hello, I'm going to be referring to Resolution Number Four.
Yes.
For nutritional recommendations.
Yes.
Yes, this resolution is grounded in good published science and also clinical practice. And in regard to the course of medical viral infection, there is very little that is put out to the public in regard to what any individual is able to do to support his or her own health. There also is a bit of confusion on the part of medical practitioners in having a good understanding of what they're able to offer to their patients. And this resolution will clarify what is available in the medical literature that can reasonably help to support either the individual trying to maintain his own health or the medical professionals as they offer more advice to their patients.
Okay. Do we have any comments?
I will make, if I may, Sheriff. Each one of these resolutions, I would like, and this is very important, we put this in for a specific purpose. In the summary, the last sentence of the summary, it states, and then quote, "These are recommendations only from the Lander County Health Board, and all medical and treatment decisions should be made after consultation with your medical provider." It's important to point that out. Each resolution has that in bold type at the beginning of the resolution.
Okay, and that, and even with that bold type, I mean, because I have people in mind who I, and I've had some discussion, that I could see, read this and think, "Oh, this is what I need to do." Without, even, is it one more thing just on that, on the very top of it where it says, and it's bold, and even down there, where it's like, underlying, you are, this is, you need to contact your medical provider. Because I just have people envisioned of collateral that will think, "Oh, this is what the county thinks, and this is what we should do," and not, I don't know. And maybe it's overkill, but I just have people in mind that I, that will go, "This is, this is what the county thinks I should do, and I'm gonna go and do it without contacting their doctor." And that's my, only my biggest concern.
And then the other concern I'd have along with that is that because it came out of the commission, people would think, "Well, I can just go to the clinic or the hospital, and I can get this stuff done." But I think it's important to put in there that you need to see your physician if you need these things. But the commission is just saying, "Hey, we're concerned."
Well, you put in where? Because it's in there. It's in there in bold. And I can't make it, I can't make it more. Oh, I know. I mean, but I wanted, I wanted to make you all aware that we took, and with the doctor, with the doctor's counsel, we made sure that everyone who reads this resolution should, and may. They don't have to, but if they feel the need to consult with a medical provider, we recommend that they do it. Thank you.
Okay. And I know that you can only bold something so much, but I just, I, you know. But those are the only comments that I have. Anybody else have any comments?
I will make a motion that we take these five resolutions, which are guidance for our Lander County citizens, and recommend those for approval to the Lander County Board of Commissioners.
Can we talk about, I have some concerns on some of them. Can we talk about them before we do them all at once, please? Okay?
Commissioners, I'm not sure if you can hear me.
I can hear you.
My name is Dr. Henry Ealy, and I would like to provide a public comment on this and be myself available to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Okay, go ahead.
First and foremost, I want to say thank you for championing the cause of evidence-based science. And I want to let everybody know that I head up a team of volunteer professionals that include licensed medical practitioners and PhD scientists. And we have invested collectively over 20,000 hours into the empirical evidence surrounding COVID. We have published five peer-reviewed papers. Our latest peer-reviewed paper on COVID, which is titled, "COVID-19: Restoring Public Trust During a Global Health Crisis", is one of the first papers en masse to look at the evidence supporting the efficacy of clinical treatments, particularly vitamin D, alchymectin, and hydroxychloroquine. In this paper, we have collected hundreds of empirical evidence-based studies that support the safe and effective use of these as treatment, and we feel it is urgent, and have been working, attempting to work with state agencies since June thirtieth of last year, to get this information out to the public so that we can help save lives and be part of the solution. Uh, we feel that we have a very good handle on asymptomatic transmission and the problems with that failed theory, we feel that we have a very good handle on PCR testing and the problems with that as a diagnostic, and we feel like we have a very good handle on the evidence supporting the safe and effective use of vitamin D, vitamin A, vitamin C, vitamin E, zinc, ivermectin, and hydroxychloroquine. And I'd like to present myself, um, as an author of over two hundred works on, um, holistic nutrition and natural medicine, as a licensed doctor, uh, and also as the founder of a, uh, school that promotes board certifications in holistic nutrition, um, to the commissioners of this board for questions.
Okay, one of my questions in this, in this one is that we can recommend this, and the people can go to their healthcare provider, and their healthcare providers are not required to do what's in here, I mean, not, because we don't really have the authority, and so I need to, and people need to understand that as well, these are just our recommendations, and we have no authority to, I mean, they can go and say, this is what I would like, and the doctor can say, I don't believe this is in your best interest, and not go that way, but they have the authority, and I would, um, would hope that in the case that that happened, that wasn't, that, this is where I don't, what I don't wanna see, I don't want us tearing down physicians for not doing it in their best interest if they think that this is not the best way for that patient, that we're not in a battle with doctors telling them how to treat their patients, and that's, I think that's one of my fears, is that.
If they.
Fear, and it's, it's a valid fear, Commissioner, um, and I think that what's very important for us to do is to fall back on the patient bill of rights that all organizations, including the American Medical Association champion, and teach in their medical courses, and the patient's bill of rights is very clear that it is a doctor's duty to present to the patient the full scope of treatment options available to them, and it is their job at that point and their duty to step back and allow the patient, who has been properly informed, to decide on the course of action that is best for them. And I think that is something that these resolutions do bring forward to the table again, the notion that you must be in a communication with your licensed physician and work with them to decide what's in your best interest, and at that point, um, that is left to the discretion of the patient, actually.
Yes, and I, but I, that's where I still, if they, if they don't get, you know, if the patient doesn't feel like they're getting from their doctor what they need, if they want to change physicians, which we all have a zillion times, that they have that right without us getting in the middle of it and saying, well, you know, these are our recommendations, and this is what you should do, I don't want to get in the middle of a battle with our, our hospital, or any other hospital, trying to tell them, I mean, if they're giving, we tell them that their bill of rights are out here, here's the information, but at that point, our, our job ends, correct, we don't not go beyond that, because it's none of our business to go any further, and I wanted to make sure that that's.
Well, I'd like to point out, it says in the summary, just what you said.
I'm Dr. Williams Wyler here, I'd like to chime in and second some of what Dr. Henry Ely said, do, do, do I have a moment?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, so, uh, I was, I was told I should give a little bit of my background, I'm the director and CEO of a nonprofit that's focused on biomedical research in the public interest, I have an extensive resume I won't waste your time with. Where I see, uh, the uniqueness in the initiative, uh, that your county is undertaking here is that there is insufficient information given to patients by, uh, anyone, including the FDA, including Dr. Fauci, including a physician, on the, the extreme value of proper nutrition in enabling paid parents, uh, patients to better fight, uh, coronavirus and other infectious diseases. In particular, for example, the science on vitamin D three is amazingly strong, I can tell you exactly how vitamin D three helps the immune system pull proteins properly so that they're better able to use the immunity that comes to them through infection or vaccination. And, um, the, uh, the, the second point I'd like to make with respect to this issue is, uh, to congratulate you for taking this issue up, in, importantly, and in particular, on the local versus federal, the local versus state, um, center of power issue, specifically that I learned this year, something I didn't understand, was that medical standard of care is determined by local physicians, it's not determined from the top down, and what we've seen with COVID nineteen is an inversion of that, what we've seen for a number of years and decades, in fact, is an inversion of, and an intrusion of public health into allopathic medicine, uh, to the point where allopathic medicine is being run around by the nose by public health. Public health physicians, uh, uh, pub, sorry, public health, uh, servants are, are often not, uh, medically trained physicians, and so I just wanted to emphasize that if there's a battle, sometimes when you're setting your medical, uh, uh, constrained population free, sometimes they're afraid of that freedom, and I, and I think that, uh, it's a great example that if there are physicians who don't yet know the high, high value of the success rate of augmenting nutrition, uh, with supplements, and I would add quercetin, uh, to, to the potential supplements that, that are of high value, and selenium, because our soil is depleted, our vegetables don't have the same level of selenium, no one's informing the public, and so the role that I see, you, this particular, um, uh, action would be to inform the public that there is science behind, uh, the, the tie between nutrition and health, and I, again, I congratulate you for taking it up, it's extremely important.
Okay, yeah, that, and I agree, um, from someone who has, um, several health problems, it's amazing what you, when you start to look at those things and do things different, and take out all of the garbage, and put on good what happens, it's amazing, so I can speak on that behalf, but I just wanna make sure that we all understand that we do not, our, ours is just information, and beyond that, everything is dealt with the patient, and make sure that, you know, that, that's between the patient and the doctor, and we're not getting involved in any of that because we don't have the authority, and I just wanna make sure that those boundaries are set. And then my last one is just a statement of, I'm, I'm, was very upset when I found out, I did not realize that, um, with any shot, I didn't know, not just this shot, but with any shot, anything that's in a trial, that you take, that is, there's no recourse if there's something down the road, um, and that this just kept me up a couple of nights, truly, because I had no idea, as my twenty-six-year-old daughter takes the shot, 'cause she's in the military, that if something happens down the road, five or six years down the road, or all these young people, they don't have any recourse, and that's, and that's not just, you know, 'cause I, I struggled, and I want people to know, I've struggled back and forth, 'cause I do not wanna scare people, but they, people have to know what they're stepping into, um, and that's, and then be able to make the choice themselves, and I don't want it to be scary on either, I don't wanna scare people out of it, and I don't wanna scare people into it, and, um, so, but people have to know and understand what, and read, and for their own, for their own, for their own good, you need to pay attention to what you're doing, and, um, that we guide our children, teach them to do that as well, because, like I said, um, years down the road, you have recourse if there are problems, and so I think, uh, I was very upset when I did come across that, so, um, I just wanted to make sure I put that on the record, 'cause I'm still upset by that.
I'd like to tag on that, I, I think Kathy said, in clinical.
I can weigh in on that, too, Dr. Dr. Lyons Wyler here again, specifically, uh, the studies have shown now, and I, this surprised me, if everyone could mute their phone possibly, because there's way too much feedback, it's difficult to put a thought together if you're not speaking, but, but the, the, the studies, the peer-reviewed studies that have come out since COVID nineteen show that the people that, that did poorly under COVID nineteen infection, they have a T, they have a skew in their immune system, um, the dietary inclusion of supplements and et cetera, uh, should be expected to not only reduce the risk of serious COVID nineteen, there's a lot of chatter back there, but also the, um, potentially the risk of, of serious injury from vaccines, and I, I have been an expert in the National Vaccine, uh, Compensation Program, the National Injury Vaccine Comp- Vaccine Injury Compensation Program, I published a study, pediatric vaccination versus unvaccinated, uh, populations, and the families with, uh, pre-existing autoimmunity tend to do worse under the vaccination program, and none of this information is being brought forward, because the concern is if these, if these risk factors are known, the rest of the population will also stop vaccinating, and, uh, that's why it's very important that we see this as complementary and not instead of, so thank you, I think it'll lay your fears a little bit, if the population of your, of your county is better, uh, nourished and has better health or nourishment, that they might be able to weather these kinds of storms better.
So.
Yes, let me, let me share, Commissioners, on that as well, it is without, it is without, this is Dr. Henry Ely again, um, this, it is without question that people who are well-nourished are going to have a.
Hello, I need you to stop for one second, please.
Yes.
So, is the guys that are not speaking, can you please mute your phones?
I'm gonna mute them all.
Okay.
I'm muted.
Yes, uh, hello, this is Dr. Henry again, am I clear to speak?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Nope, there you go.
With this, with this in mind, um, I want the, I want everybody to be aware of something that the CDC has known for the last twenty years, Americans are deficient, thirty-five to forty-five percent of Americans are deficient in vitamin A, according to the CDC, thirty-seven to forty-six percent of Americans are deficient in vitamin C, according to the CDC, sixty-five to ninety-five percent of Americans are deficient in vitamin D, according to the CDC, eight, sixty to eighty-four percent of Americans are deficient in vitamin E, according to the CDC, and eleven to fifty percent of Americans are deficient in zinc, according to the CDC. These are all key essential nutrients for optimized immune function, uh, with respect to any infectious disease, including, um, a vaccine, which should be viewed as an artificial infection, because its job is to help inspire the production of antibodies. To increase the safety of any biologic, we need to have our citizens properly nutrient, um, have proper nutrient availability in their bloodstream, it just is, it goes without question. The same thing is true for anyone who wants to, um, decline the biologic until clinical trials are concluded and things like that, anyone that wants to decline it, the same nutrients are going to help them prevent not only a, a, a law call or a serious adverse experience with a SARS-CoV-2 infection, we have definitive empirical evidence to substantiate that claim, but they're also going to help prevent the infective spread, and get us back to opening up our small businesses, getting kids back into school, and getting us back to life as we know it in the pursuit of happiness. It all comes down to what's going on in the bloodstream, SARS-CoV-2 virus does not care what the color of your skin is, what your sexual orientation or your political party is, it cares what your nutrient status is in your bloodstream. If we empower our citizens to have a strong nutrient density in their bloodstream, they will effectively be able to fight COVID nineteen, and if they choose to get a, uh, the, the vaccine, they will have a much lower incidence of adverse events, and this is just basic science, folks, and we have enough empirical evidence to substantiate it, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a few words.
My final comment, Dr. Lyons Wyler here, is regarding the PCR motion on testing, uh, PCR was brought in as a response to the fact that, uh, we were, we fell behind the eight ball in testing and contact tracing, there really hasn't been an efficient, uh, or real contact tracing program in the United States because it got out of hand, and in the formulation of that testing program, uh, for the first time ever in medical science, quantitative, uh, reverse transcript based PCR was, uh, used as a substitute for medical diagnosis, and further, quantitative reverse transcript based RT-PCR was also for the first time made you, made applicable to all persons, uh, with a, a very strange, unusual, uh, strategy by which a, a threshold of significance for diagnosis was established for all kids, for all persons in all states, and they should have, um, required, FDA should have required, uh, a, a positive control, ideally a positive control and a negative control, my PhD is actually from the University of Nevada Reno, and i- in, uh, the bi- the biological sciences department, and in the E- EECB department, um, I ran PCR in the lab, and I, I ran a sequencing, uh, core, uh, laboratory, sorry, at the University of Massachusetts, and I ran the bioinformatics department, uh, at, at the, uh, the University of Nevada Reno as a research corps, um, I was shocked, frankly, to see that the, uh, the FDA did not require a negative control because by virtue of the word quantitative, you should, you, you should be able to quantify the amount of virus that's present in a sample, everybody that gets swabbed, I don't know if anybody who's been tested is familiar with the nasopharyngeal procedure, there's a, a varying amount of, of virus, uh, on the swab itself, and so you really should have a spike in positive control to be able to count the number of vi- of virion particles, uh, to know whether the person is likely infectious or not, uh, instead, what they've done is they, they, they decided to, on the side of caution, considering only the, the probability that a person might have a false negative diagnosis, in other words, they set the value, the threshold too high, uh, so everybody could get a positive e- e- uh, diagnosis, mixed in with those positive diagnoses were a, a bunch of false positives, and if, if you look at the scientific literature, as I have, there's, uh, at least four studies out there that show that the pos- the false positive rate of the RT-PCR used in this matter can range from eleven percent, from an Australian study, to as high as potentially thirty-seven percent in a study of marine recruits on a base, uh, where they could not sequence, uh, the full genome of up to thirty-seven percent of the, um, the, the marine recruits that were given a, a, a positive diagnosis by PCR, and so, the World Health Organization actually announced on January twentieth, make that, make of that what you will, that it happened on the same day that President Biden was sworn in, that, yes, they, they set the CT score too high, and it has to come down, if you change, if you bring the CT score down, that threshold down, you're going to see a drop in the number of cases of COVID nineteen, and so, the, the, I congratulate you for bringing up the, the issue in these, in these resolutions, um, uh, to make sure that there's accurate testing for your citizenry, I think this could, is a really exciting development, in fact, because there are billions of dollars that are coming for sequence-based validation of COVID nineteen, for validating tests, uh, from the federal government, there's millions of dollars, uh, but also, to keep track of a new variants, you cannot detect a new variants with the PCR test, so you have to move towards sequencing, and I'd be happy to answer any questions about this, in particular of, uh, potential new industry in Nevada, uh, to, to provide, um, you know, nucle- nucleic acid, uh, um, sequence determination, uh, of, of patients who are seeking differential diagnosis, not just of COVID, but of influenza, I'm sure everyone's noticed that influenza disappeared, viruses don't disappear, uh, there's a diagnostic substitution going on there, I have peer-reviewed studies on this, I have another one coming out soon, uh, that makes the point, uh, it's a very dangerous to presume COVID nineteen in tested patients who tested negative, it's also dangerous to presume COVID nineteen as a disease in tested patients who test positive, uh, our results, uh, are showing that the more testing you do with PCR, in a counterintuitive way, leads to a larger false positive risk for the entire population, which, of course, is a, is a, is an effort that leads to more and more testing, and the more and more cost, more and more shutdown of society, so it's very, very important, uh, and, and I'm excited, actually, that somebody in the United States is willing, willing to take a good empirical look at this, uh, uh, from the perspective of, uh, a, a public health, um, issue at the local level, we need a diversity of inquiry on this so that we can get to the bottom of what the best ways forward are, so, um, that, I'll be happy to answer questions on this matter.
All right, thank you, all right, Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a few statements, and if, if in any of my statements I'm incorrect, I, uh, please, uh, correct me if I'm incorrect in what I'm about to say, so to tag on what Kathy was saying, as far as vaccines in trials, uh, trial, uh, state, uh, nobody can come back, you can't come back and hold the vaccine company or the company accountable, but I believe that's not only vaccines in trial. But I believe that's not only vaccines in trial, I believe that's any vaccine. That's my first statement. Second statement is, I'm glad that Kathy really beat the dead horse as far as uh, us as a county being able to only recommend, not require. Um, there's been many times I've been to a doctor and they recommend a certain thing. I'm a I'm a grown-up, I go and I do my own research. Um, I talk to another doctor and then I I come up on the basis, what's going to be best for me? So I like to say all this stuff is recommendations. And I'd like to point out, that's exactly what's happening to our counties from the state. They are putting us in, they're giving us a requirement, a health requirement. It's not a recommendation that you wear a mask. They're taking away my right to have my own say for my health. And I think it's wrong that any county, if there's any county department, any other county in the state that's requiring any of their county employees to wear masks, they really could then we're in that exact position that Commissioner Anshu was stating. It's no longer a recommendation, it's a requirement. And if somebody if somebody gets sick, if somebody dies because of that requirement, what are the legal ramifications because of that? I just wanted to point those things out.
Can I can I substantiate that real quick? Maybe this is Dr. Henry.
Hold on one second.
Hold on one second, please.
Of course.
Okay, I have one thing I want to say that I found out during this COVID stuff. And that is that the Geneva Convention covers experimental medicines. Experimental medicines, according to the Geneva Convention, which, I mean, we're talking about war regulations. Okay, and we're gonna go to that for a standard. Three years is the timeline that you have to test a new medication. These medications that came out, these vaccines were guaranteed 85%, 75%. There's no time for that, to to test that. And the people, the 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 article talked about the people who are involved in giving out these vaccines, that they could be responsible under the Geneva Convention for a war crime. I hope that we don't see that. But you know, the more this country pushes further away from the Constitution, the closer we are.
One other thing I'd like to point out, this is Commissioner Sparks, was uh, we were very quick to act as a county when this COVID thing hit our county, that we adopted the White House White House policy, which basically stated that we recommend, we don't require, but we recommend. And I want to say that has been our stance from day one. And that's what it continues to be.
Amy, uh, hold on, I know I would like, there's somebody in the audience like to speak, so Amy, go ahead.
Actually, I just have a question about this government overreach, and I'll tell you why. When when this first came out, my son, who's young, healthy, excellent vitamins and nutrition, so I wasn't concerned about him he got the Corona, the COVID-19. And I know it's a 99.997 recovery rate, but his uh, place of employment made him go in and test and stick that thing up his nose. And then I was on the phone and I demanded he get HCQ. The doctor refused. The doctor said the Lantons said it was bad. The doctor said his license would be revoked by the governor of our state if he prescribed it. Does this um, does this have any recourse for somebody like me who if I asked for a specific proven therapeutic or preventative type, you know, antidote? Do these Lander County resolutions support that a doctor couldn't deny that? Or is there, I that's just a question I have.
It's just in ours is just a recommendation, like I said early, the first thing I said, we have no bearing on what the doctor does, it's it's in the heart of the hospital.
Understand, but the governor, we've made it illegal for the doctor to do his job, is my point.
But I that that would have to be a question that you'd ask an attorney because that is a very convoluted deep.
Oh, I call an attorney.
Yeah, and so but that, you know, that's where I wanted to make sure that people understood that our recommendations, because I've lost sleep over all of this, trying to make sure that I'm doing the right thing and not beating dead horse, but know that I'm doing and as a re- these are recommendations and that we have no authority over anybody. We're just saying, people, these just know that these, this is what's out there and that you need to be practicing your penitentiations, your own health, and talking to your doctor.
If a governor or a or a president, a federal state overreaches into a local decision.
About all you can do in this situation is remember when you vote.
Well, yeah.
Because what governor, what elected official has the right to ban a medication that works?
Yeah, threaten a license.
I mean, there there at some point, there's going to be reconciliation about this stuff.
And that, you know, when they tie and that's all, you know, they tie that they they tie the providers' hands and they're the ones, you know, that they get stuck in the middle of all of this convoluted stuff as well.
Correct.
Like I said, I I just.
Commissioner, may I?
Go ahead.
Commissioner, this is Dr. Henry Ely. May I, yes, so in our in our current, in our newly released, peer-reviewed physician statement uh, that I that I I'm quoting from right now, COVID-19 Restoring Public Trust During a Global Health Crisis, We Address and and Raise the Question of Willful Misconduct. One of the things that we've had an issue with since last year is the FDA's um, banning crackdown, if you will, on physicians who are attempting to utilize ivermectin, hydroxychloroquine, fudocinide, uh, vitamin D and so forth as effective treatments, especially based upon the global empirical evidence that is available. Uh, that hasn't stopped the FDA from doing two things. One is citing studies that were either designed to fail or they interpreted in a fraudulent way. And we've addressed that concern, those some of those studies. Or two outright threatening doctors. A resolution like this, and while I am so in favor of it, is not only does it get information to your citizens that is safe and effective and does have empirical evidence to substantiate it, but it also empowers doctors and nurses who, for the last six or seven months, have been dying to get this information to their patients. It gives them the authority in Gore County to now issue it because there is there is guidance on it, there is a recommendation for it. And that opens the door for them to have these discussions and really open up the treatment options for their patients so that we can have better outcomes that save lives and save money. I think that's the, there is a cost benefit to sharing information that has empirical evidence to it and allowing doctors to have conversations beyond what a governor or a CDC would want them to have. Thank you.
Thank you, doctors. We need a motion on this.
Do we have any public comment?
There is a motion.
Do we have any?
Okay.
Yeah, we already have a motion, but do we have any further public comment?
And the motion was for the guidance. It does say guidance of our citizens. And of course, the resolutions have been all the recommendations.
Okay, so Patsy made the motion.
I'll second the motion.
All right, Brian. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, very good.
Commissioners, thank you very much. We really appreciate what you just said. This is a historic moment in our country's history. Thank you so much.
You know, I think that the one thing that this commission is concerned about.
He voted aye.
Dr. Ross spoke.
Dr. Ross. Is he unmute?
Yep, yes.
Yes, we need your vote, doctor.
Oh, yeah, yes, I need your permission to support the resolution.
All right, so now we can go back out of um, out of that.
You know, I think that what we're concerned about is getting the truth out to the people in this county.
That was my biggest thing is this is, you know, information only and we have no authority over anyone else. And that's just my biggest, so. All right, so we're going to adjourn the meeting into the Lander County Health Board and reconvene to the Lander County um, Lander County Board of Commissioners. So we're gonna start with um, eight, nine, ten, eleven. So, yeah, who's gets to read all these? And so for discussion and possible action to approve the Resolution 2021-04 with reference to the national guidance for Lander County citizens.
So we should be opening eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve.
So can we do that or they all have to be?
Yes, but you can open them all up.
Okay.
And to for discussion, so if you want, if you're on one resolution, you can discuss all the other ones. Uh, but you do have to read them all separately.
Okay, so that's, it's eight through what?
Eight through twelve, I believe.
Eight through twelve, okay. So, well, we're gonna go ahead and open eight, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve for more, there's more discussion on this.
So you need to read eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
On the item, on the agenda.
Oh, I see. I'm sorry. All this is new to me, so I'm very sorry. So for eight, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the resolution, Resolution 2021-04 with reference to the nutritional guidance for Lander County citizens. Number nine, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove Resolution 2021-05 with re- um, reference to the treatment guidance for Lander County citizens. Number 10, for discussion and possible action to approve Resolution, um, possible action to approve Resolution 2021-06 with um, reference to the testing protocol guidance um, for Lander County. So 11, for discussion and possible action to approve, dis- um, disapprove Resolution 2021-07 with reference to elder and disabled residents' rights guy- guidance for Lander County citizens. Uh, 12, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove Resolution 2021-08 with reference to the vaccine informed consent guidance for Lander County citizens. So I I have um, a question on um, for on number 11, I'm not quite understanding um, as far as what this resol- um, how this resolution um, as as far as information only, I'm still a little confused on how the, once again, we can't, all we can do is recommend that this information's out there. There's nothing that we can do to make anybody do anything, correct? Am I, okay, I just, I know, and I know I'm beating a dead horse, but I'm just trying to understand that because this is just a lot.
Resolutions are non-binding.
So, okay.
And at the top of every resolution, it's the summary, it states exactly that in bold.
Okay, so, all right, so any other discussion?
Now, now, someone can make a motion for all five of them and read all five of them in, or you can do make a motion for the first one, read that in, then make a motion for the second one. Either way is permissible, but all five have to be ready.
I don't think one of us wants to read all five of them in.
Well, I'll suffer.
But yeah, but I'll I'll go ahead and take the first one.
I've got cataract surgery next Thursday, so I'm kind of looking around things here.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution number 2021-04 of the Board of Lander County Commissioners. Summary, a resolution recommending nutritional guidance for residents of Lander County. These are recommendations only from the Lander County Health Board and all medical and treatment decisions should be made after consultation with your medical provider. Whereas, it is known by public health agencies and based upon recent National Health and Nutrition Examination Survey, which is N-H-A-N-E-S data, published by the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, 65 to 95% of Americans are deficient in vitamin D. 60 to 80% of Americans are deficient in vitamin E. 35 to 45% of Americans are deficient in vitamin A. 37 to 46% of Americans are deficient in vitamin C. And 11 to 15% of Americans are deficient in zinc. And whereas, it is known by public health agencies that people deficient in vitamin D, vitamin E, vitamin A, vitamin C, and zinc are more susceptible to infection, prolonged infection, hospitalization, and severe adverse events related to the pathophysiological response to all infections, including the SARS-CoV-2 virus and variants. And whereas, it is known, based upon the preponderance of peer-reviewed, evidence-based research, that the inclusion of vitamin D, vitamin E, vitamin A, vitamin C, and zinc reduces duration of infection and hospitalization. And whereas, evidence-based nutritional guidance has been proven safe based upon the billions of oral administrations consumed annually without cause of death or severe adverse event. And whereas, evidence-based nutritional guidance has been proven effective specifically for COVID-19 based upon the preponderance of evidence submitted for public record. And whereas, economic and mental health concerns now take precedence within our county, making the safe return in-person education, the responsible reopening of small businesses, and the essential reemergence of citizens and society a county priority. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Lander County Board of Commissioners recommends as follows. Lander County recommends all residents discuss with their primary care providers the safety and efficacy of all nutritional guidance before endeavoring into the use of evidence-based nutritional guidance. And Lander County recommends that residents use a lot, utilize all evidence-based means to safely return to their pursuit of happiness, including regular handwashing and staying home when feeling ill and taking supplemental precautions to show up any unknown nutrient deficiency using peer-reviewed evidence. And Lander County recommends the following nutritional guidance as an additional option for the mitigation of the infective spread of SARS-CoV-2 and all pathogenic microorganisms by using supplementation from reputable companies with at least one of the following certifications for purity and potency. C-GMP, NSF, USP, UL, Non-GMO Project, or Consumer Labs. And Lander County recommends the following nutritional guidance as an additional tool for the responsible reopening of our community, including small businesses, bedside advocate access in hospital and long-term care, senior care settings, and the safe return to in-person education for all children. Seniors, adults, pregnant and nursing mothers, and teenagers. Vitamin A, betacarotene, 5,000 IU day. Vitamin C, 3,000 to 5,000 MG day. Vitamin D3, 10,000 IU day for 14 days and 5,000 IU day thereafter. Vitamin E, 200 to 600 IU day. Zinc, 25 to 40 MG day. Taken with food to minimize any temporary feelings of nausea that supplementation can lead to. Children aged 5 to 12, vitamin A, betacarotene, 5,000 IU a day. Vitamin C, 2,000 to 4,000 MG a day. Vitamin D3, 5,000 IU day for 14 days and 2,000 IU day thereafter. Vitamin E, 100 IU day. And zinc, 25 MG a day. Taken with food to minimize any temporary feelings of nausea that supplementation can lead to. Children aged 1 to 4, vitamin A, betacarotene, 2,000 IU day. Vitamin C, 500 to 1,000 MG day. Vitamin D3, 1,000 to 2,000 IU day. Vitamin E, 50 IU day. And zinc, 10 MG day. Taken with food to minimize any temporary feelings of nausea that supplementation can lead to. This board recommendation constitutes prima facie evidence that persons and entities, including medical provider within Lander County, are not subject to findings findings of negligent per se on the sole basis of having engaged in activities that are inconsistent with exec- executive emergency orders related to COVID-19. And this board recommendation constitutes prima facie evidence that in Lander County, the hazard posed by COVID-19 is one of low probability and risk and that reasonable precautions taken by persons and entities to minimize the virus spread constitute good faith efforts regardless of whether such precautions are consistent with executive emergency orders related to COVID-19. And all persons and entities within Lander County may present this board recommendation to any court of tribunal, including proceedings before administrative bodies as prima facie evidence of good faith, compliance with relevant state and local laws and rules, including administrative rules, while engaging in activities that are inconsistent with executive emergency orders related to COVID-19. Passed and adopted this 25th day of March, 2021.
Patsy, uh, could you please, for the record, say that it does say 11th day of March and could you?
It has been corrected on the, okay, um, on the information in front of me. It does say the 11th of March. That has been corrected for the 25th of day of March, which is today, 2021. So the original will be correct.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner.
Do I need to authorize the chair to sign? So done.
All of you sign.
All of us sign?
Yep.
Okay. I I know it's recorded.
And then the chair, okay.
But I don't think we sign it. Okay, all right, and authorize the chair to sign, thank you.
Patsy made the motion, Brian second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there any public comment?
So any public comment?
Hold on.
I'll read this one.
Okay, ask again.
Any public comment? Alright, moving forward.
Muted, unmuted.
Let me read this art. I'll read it and then we're centered to the speaker.
Okay, alright, so. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove resolution two zero two one.
You've read them all in.
Oh, so I've already read them all in, so we can go ahead.
Oh, we just vote?
Yep.
Well, what we no, no, what you do is is you make a motion. To adopt the second resolution and read the second resolution.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve resolution two oh two one dash oh five. And I'll read that in for the record, summary, the resolution recommending treatment guidance for residents of Lander County. These are recommendations only from the Lander County Health Board and all medical and treatment decisions should be made. After consultation with your medical provider. Whereas it is known by public health agencies that people deficient in vitamin D, vitamin E, vitamin A, vitamin C, and zinc are more susceptible to infection. Prolonged infection, hospitalizations, and severe adverse related to adverse events related to patho. Physiological response to all infections, including SARS and. C O V dash two viruses and variants. And whereas it is known based upon a preponderance of evidence that vitamin D deficiency plays substantial role in negative outcomes due to. SARS and COV dash two infection. Whereas it is known that based upon peer-reviewed research involving one hundred and ninety-one thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine patients that patients with circ. Circulating vitamin D twenty-five hydroxy levels less than twenty nanograms per milliliter. Are more than twice as likely to contract SARS COVID two viruses when compared to patients. With circulating vitamin T, vitamin D, twenty-five hydroxy levels equal to or greater than fifty-five nanograms per. Uh milliliter and whereas it is important for all citizens to have access to evidence-based treatments. And whereas the off labeled use of Food and Drug Administration, FDA-approved medications is standard practice in medicine and. Iver- Ivermecin and Hydroxychloroquine have been clinically proven to be safe and affected off-label used as. What's that word, Ted Pro?
Prophylactic.
Prophylaxis.
Used in prophylactics and treatment of COVID nineteen and it is universally agreed upon. That the withholding of evidence-based treatments from people in need is unethical and potentially evidence of willful misconduct. Now therefore be resolved that the Lander County Board of Commissioners recommends the following, Lander County recommends that all medical facilities administer. Sirlogic vitamin D twenty-five hydroxy testing to all patients exhibiting signs or symptoms of COVID nineteen. Upon entry and or admission to a medical facility and Lander County recommends that all pa- patients will be circulating vitamin D twenty-five hydroxy level below fifty-five nanog- nanograms per milliliter. Be issued daily oral oral vitamin D or ten thousand. Units for fourteen days, then reduce dosing to five thousand units per day for all patients thirteen of. Years of age or older, two thousand units a day for patients five to twelve years of age and a thousand units a day for patients. One to four years of age and Lander County recommends that evidence-based primary treatment options including Ivermecin. Hydroxychloroquine, intravenous, ascorbic acid, and therapeutic oral dosing of vitamin A, C, D, E, and N be prescribed to patients. And their family advocates. All patients with mental capacity to decide the course of action they would like to take. Should be allowed to select their own desired treatment option or options as protected by the Patients' Bill of Rights and Lander County recommends. Evidence-based supportive treatment options including nebulizer, H two O two nebulizer. Glorithone. Worsitin and melatonin be offered to patients when appropriate and help accelerate patient recovery. And passed and adopted on this eleventh day of March corrected to the twenty-fifth. And for the Commissioners to sign.
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one.
Oh, twenty twenty-one, I'm still twenty twenty, yeah.
I'll second the motion.
Art made the motion, um. Patty second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 So I'll make a motion um that we approve resolution two zero two one dash oh six. With reference to the testing protocol guidance for Lander County citizens, I'll read it into the record. Resolution number two zero two one dash zero six of the Board of Lander County Commissioners, summary, a resolution recommending. Testing protocol guidance for residents of Lander County. These are recommended recommendations only from the Lander County Health Board and all medical and treatment. Decisions should be made after consult- consultation with your medical provider. Whereas there has been no evidence to definitively substantiate that asymptomatic transmission of the SARS. COVID two virus is a driver of infective spread or exists based upon medical gold standards of clinical and laboratory investigation. And whereas there is significant published peer-reviewed evidence based upon medical gold standards of clinical and laboratory investigation. To disprove the theory of asymptomatic transmission of the SARS COVID two virus. And whereas qualitative COVID R T Q P C R tests are not calibrated to be used diagnostically. Diagnostically and whereas qualitative COVID R T Q P C R test cannot determine whether a positive test result is indeed infectious. And whereas it has been admitted by the World Health Organization in January two thousand twenty-one. That cycle threshold values for qualitative COVID R T Q P C R. Have been set too high and have thus been responsible for encouraging false positives. Results at cycle threshold values above twenty-five. And whereas it has been proven by world-renowned P C R expert, Doctor Sang Ha Lee. That qualitative R T Q P C R leads to a thirty percent or greater false positive rate. And whereas qualitative COVID R T Q P C R is not based upon Sanger sequencing. And whereas Sanger sequencing is the gold standard for P C R testing development because it provides a high degree of accuracy. According to the mouth uh of the National Institutes of Health and whereas accurate testing is essentially. Is essential to the mitigation of the infective spread of the SARS COVID two virus. And whereas Emergency Use Authorization, E U A, has been granted to serologic viral load antigen testing and serological. I G M and I G G antibody testing. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lander County Board of Commissioners recommends as follows. Lander County recommends that all laboratories performing qualitative R T Q P C R testing for county residents. Submit the following information with each test result. One, cycle threshold value used to determine positive versus negative qualitative test results. Two, quantitative cycle amplification value for each patient sample. And three, quantitative delta R N value for each patient sample and. Lander County recommends that all licensed healthcare personnel interpret qualitative R T Q P C R results for symptomatic patient. Samples as follows, including requiring. Uh confirmatory lab testing for all R T Q P C R test results with quantitative cycle threshold values between twenty-five and thirty-three point nine nine and. Proposal for calibrating COVID R T Q P C R based upon viral replication competence. And it says infectious, uh that's greater than, less than, less than twenty-five. It's pretty small here. Quarantine isolation until no longer symptomatic plus two days, administration of evidence-based nutritional guidance. Re-test to serological antibodies to confirm. Plus one G G dash I G M, I'm not sure what that means, that's just what it says. Possibly infectious, twenty-five to thirty-three point ninety-nine, confirmatory lab testing. Serological antigen or live human cell culture. Correlative isolation until confirmed. Administration of evidence-based nutritional guidance as precaution and not infectious. Greater than thirty-four, recommendation of evidence-based nutritional guidance as precaution. Lander County recommends that qualitative COVID R T Q P C R testing be removed as. The primary or sole method of laboratory evaluation of suspected COVID cases due to the inherent concerns regarding accuracy and. Lander County recommends that COVID R T Q P C R testing become a reduced part. Of a more comprehens- comprehensive testing strategy exclusively for symptomatic persons only. That includes E U A approved COVID viral load antigen testing and COVID. I G M and I G G antibody testing in order to better identify who is and who is not infectious. And Lander County acknowledges that when the Food and Drug Administration, FDA approves a COVID R T Q P C R test. Based upon Sanger sequencing, that a reevaluation of the accuracy of that test will be performed. To determine its role in the comprehensive testing strategy. And Lander County acknowledges that asymptomatic transmission of the SARS COVID two virus. Has never been definitively proven by the WHO Center for Disease Control and Prevention, CDC, or State Health Department. And Lander County acknowledges that asymptomatic patients should not be tested using qualitative R T Q P C R testing alone in order to establish infectious. And Lander County formally acknowledges that asymptomatic patients should instead by tested. It says by tested, but I'm saying should be tested, should it read probably? Should instead be tested using E U A serological viral load antigen and serological I G M and I G G antibody. To establish whether or not a resident is indeed an infectious new case. And Lander County formally recommends that ten percent of the test should be verified by sequencing with nested primers targeting SARS COVID two. SARS COVID one influenza A, influenza B, and bacterial pneumonia and Lander County formally recommends that fifty percent of Sanger validated tests be further characterized. With whole uh. Genome sequencing to prov- uh to monitor variants and Lander County formally recommends the use of three. Diagnostic categories considering delta C T and relatively and relative transmissible. Transm- transm- man. Transmit trans. Thank you, transmissibility based on imperial data. Passed and adopted this eleventh day corrected to twenty-fifth day of March, two thousand twenty-one and authorized the chair to sign.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Alright, Brian made the motion, Art second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to number eleven.
I'll say, I'll say.
Okay.
Uh resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh seven, the year is twenty twenty-one. Resolution recommending elder and disabled residence right guidance for residents of Lander County, these are recommendations only from the Lander County. Health Board and all medical and treatment decisions should be made after consultation with your medical provider. Whereas there has been no evidence to definitively substantiate that asymptomatic transmission of the. SARS COVID two virus is a driver of infective spread or exists based upon medical gold standards of clinical and laboratory investigation. And whereas there is significant published peer-reviewed evidence based upon medical gold standards of clinic and laboratory investigations to disprove the theory of asymptomatic transmission of the SARS COVID two virus and whereas. A study in the Nature Journal. Of November twenty 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 demonstrated that nine million eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight enrolled participants. There was point, there was zero point zero 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 percent chance of asymptomatic trans- transmission based upon R T dash Q P C R testing. In addition to confirmer- conferme- meter- metery.
Confirmatory. Say it again.
Confirmatory?
Confirmatory.
Uh confirmatory. Now I lost my place. Confirmatory, uh I G M and I G G antibody testing as well as live cell cultures in attempts to find replication competent virus and whereas prolonged isolation is associated. With increased incidence of depression, anxiety, and despair and sequel. And all seniors and disabled persons residing in assisted living environments have explicit state and federal rights. Protecting the Nursing Home Reform Act nineteen eighty-seven and its defined Residents' Bill of Rights. Whereas senior and disabled persons have had their rights substantially infringed upon by existing state public health policies and. Whereas the Nursing Reform Act of nineteen eighty-seven and its included Residents' Bill of Rights recognizes. And protects a resident's right to participate in their own assessment, care planning, treatment, and discharge. Refuse medication and treatment, private and unrestricted communication with any person of their choice. Be free from mental and physical abuse, corporal punishment involving seclusion and physical and chemical restraints. Self-determination, visits by relatives, friends, and others of the red of the residents choosing, raise grievance grievances with fear of consequences. Make personal decisions such as what to wear and how to spend free time, participate in community activity both inside and outside the nursing nursing home. And be fully informed of the type of care to be provided and the risks and benefits proposed on treatments. There now now therefore be it resolved that the Lander County Board of Commissioners recommends the following, Lander County recommends that all residents. With senior and disabled persons assisted living environment be permitted to have visitors at their discretion and Lander County recommends that all residents with senior. And disabled persons assisted living environments be permitted to leave the residence at their discretion. Be it further resolved, Lander County recommends that all public health policies within the county are reevaluated aligned. With and meet the minimum, the standards on residents set forth in the protected by the Nursing Home Reform Act of nineteen eighty-seven and its included. Residents' Bill of Rights passed and adopted uh this eleventh day of March, the date's corrected to March twenty-fifth.
I'll second the motion.
And authorize the chair to sign.
Authorize the chair to sign.
So I have a question on this one because I I um I struggle with this one to and I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna go ahead and vote nay on it, so if I vote nay on it, how is that going for the sign? Uh signing of it, I still sign it with, it's okay, but I'm just voting nay when it comes, okay. Okay, that's fine, I just I wasn't sure because I've never voted nay on it. Okay, very good, so um Art made the motion, Brian second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna vote nay on this one. Alright, moving forward. Jerry, you ready, do you want to do this one?
Sure.
Alright.
Requested action that the Lander County Commissioner is for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove resolutions twenty twenty-one dash twenty-five. With reference to the vaccine inform.
Dash oh wait, excuse me.
Oh wait, it's dash oh wait.
I thought we were changing that.
No, that that's.
No, no, that's.
Oh, okay.
That's.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
With reference to the vaccine inform. Uh consent guidance for Lander County citizens. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh eight of Board of Lander County Commissioners.
Excuse me, Commissioner, you need to make a motion.
Oh, I make a motion that.
I know, okay, sorry, I didn't.
Turn your mic on so they can.
Okay, where were we?
You'll take this up there, it's.
Yeah, it's alright.
Start over?
No, no, you're fine.
You're fine. You're fine.
Just. Summary.
Yeah, summary of resolution recommending vaccine informed and consent guidance for residents of Lander County. These are recommendations only from the Lander County Health Board and all medical and treatment decisions should be made after consult- consultation with your medical provider. Whereas informed constant, uh, constant applies to all vaccines and under emergency use authorization, EAU, EUA of Food and Drug Administration, FDA licensure. And whereas informed consent all exist to human, protect human use of medical products still within ongoing clinical trial. And whereas all persons electing to engage in the use of medical products still within ongoing clinical trials have definitive rights to know detailed information in order to satisfy the legal tenants of being informed before granting their consent. And whereas all consisting COVID vaccines are confirmed by the National Institutes of Health, NIH, to still be in phase three of ongoing clinical trials. And whereas all existing Co- COVID vaccines are EUA-approved only and not licensed by the FDA. And whereas all existing COVID vaccines cannot be officially FDA licensed until the conclusion of the said phase three clinical trials. Once long-term safety and offici- offici- officiary data has been collected and submitted for analytical review by the FDA. And whereas all existing COVID vaccines will be in clinical trial until October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two at the earliest according to the NIH. And whereas the public readiness and emergency preparedness prep, P R E P, act protects all vaccines manufacturers for liability should their product still be in clinical trial injured to the cause of death for anyone electing to use this product without being officially entered into the clinical trial. And whereas all persons electing to engage in the use of medical products still in ongoing clinical trial have the right to be informed of known and unknown risks as well as the right to refuse any medical product still in experimental phase of development and evaluation. And whereas SARS-CoV-COV dash two vaccine manufacturers and the entire chain of production, distribution, and administration have been granted immunity from liability for adverse effects. Now therefore, it will be resolved that Lander County Board of Commissioners recommends the following. Lander County recommends that all residents of the county be provided up-to-date information from the Federal Vaccine Adverse Effects Reporting System, VAERS, regarding numbers of death following the administration of any COVID vaccines. And Lander County recommends that the residents of the county be provided with up-to-date information from VAERS regarding the number of injuries following administration of any of the COVID vaccines. Lander County recommends that all residents of the county be provided with up-to-date information from VAERS regarding numbers of deaths and injuries by age, demographic, and Lander. Lander County recommends that all health providers be aware that the signs of COVID vaccine injuries reported. And Leather County, Lander County recommends that all person electing to engage in the COVID vaccines still in ongoing clinical trial are made aware of the complete list of adverse events compiled from each official record in the VAERS prior to administration of any COVID vaccines. So the county residents can report any adverse events to their health provider should they occur. But if it be further resolved that any practitioner administering vaccines is required to provide patient with the information from the following websites on immunity from, uh, H.
Liability.
Huh?
From liability?
From liabilities and all legal remedies from any adverse events. And then it's got the.
Where did that website end?
H. HTTPS. Uh.
Colon.
Colon.
Huh?
Colon.
Colon.
Forward slash. Those are forward slashes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Congress.gov product PDF. LSB slash LSB one oh four four three. Passed and adopted on this.
Second.
Twenty-fifth day of March twenty-twenty-one.
Yep, so, um, JR made the motion.
And authorize the chair to sign.
And authorize the chair to sign.
And authorize the chair to sign.
So JR made the motion, Art second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, very good. So moving forward. Yeah, let's take a ten minute break, let's take a ten minutes, we're gonna take a ten minute break, guys.
Conference will now be recor- unmuted.
Finish all the donuts.
Those are we recording, I didn't hear. Gotta make sure before I start.
I'll eat the outlaw donuts.
Yeah, right. All right, moving forward. For discussion of possible action to change, um, the start date of the Lander County Board of Commissioner meeting in Austin. Not in about a July eighth, twenty-twenty-one.
I'll make a mission, the motion, will you approve this? Have a meeting in Austin on July eighth, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, this, this is the same one that we had on last time, but I, I was negligent, I'm sorry, I didn't set a time. And, um, and if you figure it takes an hour and a half to get down there and a good half hour to set up, I was thinking about our employees that have to be there. And instead of starting at nine o'clock, and it's usually a short meeting. If we could start a little bit later, I think that would be appreciated.
Well, you wanna give us a time?
Ten, okay?
I think I'm right with you guys because you're the ones that have to sit up.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so your motion needs the time then.
Okay, mo- make motion that we have our meeting in Austin, July eighth, and start at ten o'clock.
All right, second.
Okay.
Art made the motion, Brian second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Discussion impossible action to approve, disapprove the renewal of the contract for Hinton Burdick CPAs and advisor, auditors of Lander County for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one.
Everything good with these guys, Bert?
I'm sorry, did I miss, I'm sorry, what?
Twenty-twenty-one.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, and twenty-two, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-one and, and twenty-twenty-two, I'm sorry.
Yes, everything, everything's good with it. Um, Lake could speak to it more than I could because she deals with them more directly than I do, but.
You know, you know, direct.
Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the renewal of contract of Hinton Burdick CPAs and advisors for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two.
My second.
So Art made the motion, Brian second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, uh, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the proposal from J U B Engineering for, um, for engineer of record for the Battle Mountain and Austin airports.
How's it going?
Good, we're just here if you've got any questions, David Meyer, J U B for the record.
Yeah, I've also looked at these documents and, and I might add that, uh, that they're, they, they do an excellent job from Lander County.
All right.
No, I don't have a question. I think, I, I just haven't heard any complaints, so we're good to go. So I'll make a motion that we approve the proposal from J U B Engineering for engineer of record for the Battle Mountain and Austin airports.
I'm gonna go to second.
I'll second it.
All right, Art made the motion, JR second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
So.
Thank you. Hard to make you wait so long, but it was important.
For the, for discussion of poss- uh, discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove a request from the Battle Mountain all class reunion to allow a free day for the public at the Recreation Center on July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one.
Did this before, didn't we?
Uh, yes, Commissioner, you have, uh, about a year ago, you guys approved it for the whole community to have a free day. Um, they, but Corona hit and they didn't have the all-class reunion, obviously, so they rescheduled it for this year, so they're asking for the same. Um, and it was your guys' idea to have it free for the whole community, so that's how it's agendaized before you.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the request from the Battle Mountain Rec Center for an all-class reunion to allow a free day for the public at the Rec Center, July twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one.
My second.
All right, Art made the motion, Brian second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
For discussion of possible action to develop that a procedure for Lander County Commissioner Representative to, um, NACO on how to proceed in supporting or not supporting upcoming legislative bills and all other matters, um, taken up by NACO.
So I think this is the concern that I brought up at the last meeting in my update on how we proceed with voting from NACO, and I, now it can become an open discussion, Pat, you can explain some of how that process works and we can decide on how we want to move forward with that.
All right.
Thank you, um. With most of, of the, the bills that we support, it's all things that the county certainly agree on, and it's the best for all of our, bringing our, our local priorities because, um, there's a few things that, that often would support Washoe and Clark and not the rules, and we, we don't take stands on those. If we have anyone that actually disagrees, it's usually more than one, there are some that get to be a little bit hairy, and I know the one, um, that they were talking about, uh, that most certainly Judge Shirley brought up, which was the indigent one. And, and I talked with Ted on that, uh, when that came up, uh, we were real concerned about it. And, uh, he was concerned about it, and I think, I think, uh, I think there was probably four or five of us that were against it in any way. Um, NACO did not take a stand on that, and that was the reason why they did not. The, the problem is usually they don't vote no, but usually someone raises the concern, and I know I have on a couple of things that have gone forward, and I simply said that hasn't been even discussed at our commission, I wouldn't have any idea how anybody feels about that because it's new and it isn't anything in our, a lot of things are just recycled and recycled, the sage gosh and, and public lands and how we stand on that. So, um, the NACO has not, but they're, they're not a political organization per se. Um, so therefore they don't, you know, vote one way or the other way, they vote the way that the representatives on NACO stand. When we had the public lands discussion, I, I was so uncertain about so many things that I brought back. We had it on, on our NACO agenda all the time, it seems like, um, almost every other time. Uh, and it was Dean, Dean Bullock and Brian and all of them to give us some guidance on where to go. But most of these things are things that are just all good for all of the counties. And if they aren't, we haven't taken a stand, so I, um, I hope I haven't missed anything coming through. Uh, the one in question, um, that, uh, that Bert and Kathy were concerned about was the new one that actually allows the counties to create their own council. And this is separate from the DA, um, our DA's office. And, um, I know we, we have had some concerns with that over the years. Um, most certainly our predecessor of the DA, we had a few problems with, and before that, I think it was Saint Miles, and we, we had some problems with that DA, and some of the concerns that were brought up at the meeting were folks that definitely did not agree with the DA's office, and yet they're in office for six years, and it's like, what do we do? So we thought the alternative was to be able to do something else and, and give them some other choices, and so that's the one that actually I think has been the more recent topic. It did not come back before the board, no, we just, we were kind of presented with it, but I was okay because of some of the concerns that we've had, as I said, in previous years, and I did talk to Kathy on it too. And, and it isn't anything that's mandated, it's just an option. And anytime a bill goes through that's an option for counties to utilize, I, I think is really okay. Now, if I'm not aligned on that, um, then we, I need to be directed more so that we can set some parameters of what you would like. I guess the tough part is because so many of us sit on boards, advisory boards, that we do have voting privileges. Our water, um, our water boards for one, um, our hospital, um, uh, we do NNRDA, um, but there again, I think we all do it for the benefit of the counties involved, and it doesn't seem to be too, um, too controversial. The ones that we brought back were the ones like supporting the White Pine, uh, New Courthouse. I know we brought that before you because we weren't sure how everybody was gonna feel about that. So we brought that before the agenda so we could all make a decision and go. So anytime there's something a little bit unusual that benefits one county and not all of us, um, I try and bring it back, that's the whole point, so whatever you'd like us to do.
I think that, uh, something that we should put in place is that when anytime there's any type of voting on anything like that, regardless of what it is, it's brought back and the board gets to decide whether they support or don't support. Because it's, um, I, I, that just about, that's, I, I think that everybody should have a say on it. Um, even if it's, you know, something that they might think that's, doesn't really matter, it's not a big deal, it may matter to someone else. And so I think that, and one of the questions that was brought up when I had, um, uh, mentioned this to Dagny was, well, what happens if it's something that's the last minute? You know, I don't know, and this is something Ted can ask, if that's something that they can do by proxy where they can call in and say, hey, this is going, we just found out about this and this is going through tomorrow. Call the commission and see what they, what the consensus is on that or how that can work, I don't know how that works, but I still think, especially after, um, you know, because I, I don't think people realize, I did not myself, and I will own some of that, how all of this works until this last few months. Uh, but I truly think that it should be a board consensus because we may be right off, we may be a bit off in left field of what we think that the rest of the board thinks, and I think it's, that's, it should honestly be a board decision from, just from the bo- the get-go, so I don't know how, you know, um, everyone else thinks, but that's, I would be definitely more comfortable, and if I was the one sitting on the board, I definitely feel better going forward and saying, hey, uh, yeah, this is my opinion, but this is what the board thinks, and it should be a board, um, consensus, so.
I understand the board involvement, but I don't, I don't really know how, I mean, we, we don't want to reinvent the wheel, I mean, with most of the things that go on that are the best in the county's interests, um, if it's, if it's gonna be anything that, that's gonna be controversial, absolutely. But, but for most of the things, and like I said, we sit on water boards and things like that, we make decisions all the time. What's best for the county? Um, I, I don't know how you would highlight something. Um, first of all, you do get the information, NACO sends healthy information, um, and, um, and I encourage you to, you know, go on the board, and you and Bert both went on the committee, um, that's, that, actually a legislative committee, and that's where you get all the inside information. Um, I, if there's something in particular that you think is, is.
Things that I can guarantee you that things get, and I'll give you another example, that's a perfect example on this, is the innovation zone. Um, that is a, the innovation zones, they, I, you know, um, I would have, uh, because I found myself, when I found out about it, uh, not realized, it's before they, I guess they set the date that it was gonna come out, the innovation zone of finding out that, um, you know, who's helping write the bill, what's going on with that bill, innovation zones, people, the majority of people did not understand what that was. And I think if all of that information was, came back in layman's terms and like, what do you guys think as a board right off the bat on supporting or not supporting those innovation zones, um.
But see, that came up since our last meeting, we haven't even talked about it.
Well, I, and so, um, that, those are things that need to be come back and say, you know, is that, these are the things we moved forward. What does the board, what's the consensus of the board? So if you do have, go to a vote, you already have the answer, and that we're not behind the eight ball going, what? So if you do go to a vote, you already have the answer, and that we're not behind the eight ball going, what does our board think? Because that's a very big deal that a lot of people do not realize, and the advertisement that's on TV is how great these are. There's not one thing on there that says how detrimental those can be to counties. And so I think that knowing that that is coming forward, what is this board's opinion on that? So then if that comes up for you, which it's going to, that you already have your answer. I just, like I said, I'm learning as I go, not that that's, you know, an excuse by any means of how these different things work, but I think that should be a decision, any of that kind of stuff, those controversial things. Regardless of who's sitting in that spot on NACO, thinks it's controversial or not, put it on, and let's say, what does the, what does the board think about this? So then we don't get ourselves in these, yes, I agreed but I didn't agree, or yes, it went as a vote, or it was a consensus. This board's, we already have the stance in that we don't have to worry about kind of getting side-winded with something from here on out.
So what you're saying is, if there's a controversy, if there's an issue with NACO, then what needs to happen is, the NACO representative needs to come to this board with an agenda item, and then we discuss it and we approve it. And that representative represents the will of the board, thus the will of the people in Lander County.
There should be no voice, there should be no vote cast without the majority of this board supporting it.
It's my understanding that when the committee, NACO committee and the representatives meet, that they agendaize that meeting prior. So that should give all the representatives from all the different counties notice that they better get to their board and find out the position that their board takes on it. Because one commissioner does not have the legal authority to vote or present a view to NACO or any other body.
And as a commissioner from Lander County, I don't have any authority to ring over the other counties. So my vote could effectively be a representation of other people's counties if I don't come to the board and get approval for, yeah.
And there was an example of that in minutes, provided in background. The NACO representative took a consensus of votes, and I don't think, in talking to Winamica DA, I don't believe any, any of the boards, from a district attorney's point of view, any of the boards realized that their representative was making a vote on their back.
Right, and I go back to that same issue, Art, was it last year where NACO had to take a neutral stance on the Second Amendment? A neutral stance, you might as well just be a vote against, because you cannot voice, you don't even understand, Art, it's like
I agree.
You either have this way, you have this way, you take a neutral, well, it's a loss for one of the sides. So it's, I'm not okay, I mean, if you have a we represent this county, we're looking out for the best interest of this county. I don't want to hear, we have to take a neutral stance on this because not all the counties feel the same about it, or however that works. I just, I just, I personally feel like, I mean, that's nonsense. I mean, I'm still kind of like caught up in that whole have to take a neutral stance on the Second Amendment.
When you have made an oath to protect the state and the federal constitution and represent the will of the people.
Yeah, but we have to be careful to tread on that because, you know, it might be political, or it might not be right.
Any of that kind of stuff should
It might be too political.
Be brought back to the board and let it be a consensus of the board on that, on those kind of things. I just, like I said, I didn't realize, like I said, I didn't realize until the last handful of months exactly how that whole process worked. And it's my fault for obviously not doing enough research on some of these different, you know, things. But I sat on the water board, and, you know, they do, and you're absolutely right, Patsy, with the same thing. They asked, at that point, at their agenda, they asked the people, how do, you know, they take a big vote of everyone, and it's happening on that board as well. And so I think those are just things that should be coming back to, on the water boards, I think they need to be coming back to the commissioners too, because they are, they are voting for things that they are agreeing for legislator or not agreeing. And I didn't realize that was happening until not very long ago, but they do that on the water, on the water board as well.
What you talk about water meetings, you're
Those are advisory boards. Those are advisory boards, and I kind of understand what you're saying. NACO is not an advisory board, it is a lobbyist, they are lobbyists for
Well
Yes, they are.
Oh, no, 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 but that's not it.
It's an association, it's an association.
By their own admission, they are lobbyists.
Okay, I'm going to correct you, because we are not lobbyists, because lobbyists actually have their own set of rules. You have to register, like in Congress and stuff, when you lobby. We do not lobby, we are part of the intergovernmental system.
So you're not registered as lobbyists, but you lobby.
Yes, absolutely, they don't have rules to lobby, so they do anything they want.
They, you know, and I did some research just to find out, because I was a little, like I said, and they're an advisory board, and they're, and they're, if you read their bylaws, they're advisory. I mean, it says in their advisory board. So I mean, like I said, I've been doing to make sure I knew what I was halfway talking about on this, because it's still very confusing to me. But with that still being said, I think the bottom line is those kind of things need to come back to the board and let the board decide on those issues.
Yeah, I've got some specific questions on this backup material number 11, and it starts with Dagny discussed a BDR that would allow each county to create an office of county council. That would be a personal attorney for the commission. That would exclude the people's will of the elected DA. Noting that it would be enabling language only, not a requirement. Commissioner Waits expressed support for the measure, citing previous issues in Lander County. I'd like to know what those previous issues are that you felt it was so imperative to slap Ted and Hi right in the face.
But, okay, what, yeah.
It's the cast of, it's the cast of voice for the rest of us.
Well, yeah, and I think that that's where the voice, because I don't, you know, because I don't want it to look as like because when I was on the state, and I'm going to say this on the record, I don't have a problem, on the state rec, call on the legislative committee, when that came up, I was absolutely one that said, I can see where that could be, there could be a need for that. I absolutely said that, and I notified our district attorney that I said that on record and wanted to make sure. So I don't know, there has to be, that's why I think that it needs to come back as a consensus, because there were things, some things taken out of context, but I absolutely said that where I saw a need. But it was definitely, it wasn't a slap in the face, and when I was in the conversation on there, that's not how it was being meant. But I was
Commissioner, you didn't support it, you didn't
I just said, I can say, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, I'm not going to not say that. I said, yeah, I can absolutely see where there's a need for it, but I want to make sure that I'm not just sitting here looking pretty and not going, hey, yes, I did make a comment on that, and I'm going to own that, but I
Commissioner, you're not the representative to NACO.
That's right, you have no voice, you have no vote.
Okay, but I did, and I said this when I started out, I'll repeat it, that I did talk to Kathy about it, and that the concerns I had, we have had a very checkered board passed in this county. And I said, it goes back to the predecessor, and yes, we had problems with the predecessor before Ted, and before that, I think Patty was in, but Zane Miles, when he was on, we had all kinds of problems.
That was six years ago, Patsy.
But I can, okay.
But you're asking where I'm coming from, I'm trying to explain it, and I'm seeing this happens when you get a DA that's there and the commissioners do not agree, and he's in there or she's in there, and they're elected. So I can see this would be a good alternative for a county if they so choose.
And when did we vote on that?
So that, and that's my, the bottom line, I think that to end this kind of, this kind of animosity on the board, the bottom line is that those kind of things, when they're being voted on, or the consensus is, it's brought back to a board and let them make the decision, so, just one second, so we can all be on the same page, good, bad, or the ugly, go ahead, Bert.
So I, one of the reasons why I wanted this discussion is because one of my concerns is if NACO is representing all 17 counties, if one county was to disagree, how do they still represent you if they move forward in supporting what that is? So there's a slight conflict of interest there that I have concerns with, that I think this board just needs to consider when you guys are moving forward on whichever direction you go, but it's
And so, and that would be a good question, how does that work? Like if you have, you know, 15 counties that agree and two don't, or two who do and 15, I mean, that, that the ideology behind that, I would like, that would be interesting to know how that works.
You pay your fee, and you support these guys, but they don't support you. You see what I'm saying?
No, no, I understand, I understand.
If we want to hire a lobbyist, let's hire a lobbyist that works for us and supports our will.
Right, because I'll tell you what, the important thing was last year when I went back to DC, all you heard was money for incarcerated juveniles. That was the thrust of NACO last year in DC. I talked to the president of NACO, I let him read our resolution on the Second Amendment, and he looked at me and he said, oh, take it to the judiciary committee and see if you can get it on the agenda. I said, you mean to tell me, as on fire as the rural counties are in the West, this isn't being brought forward? This is constitutional assassination? Nothing, that's NACO representing us on the Second Amendment. Oh, and let's annex Clark County to California.
Amy Nelson, and then I do have to leave after this, but I don't know anything about NACO, here's what I do know. The same thing is happening with the Nevada State Education Association, the teachers' unions, the National Teachers Union, they're being infiltrated, and we are being silenced. Right now, I can't go to the legislature to express anything, lobbyists can't. Everything's done by phone or writing. Basically, the public is closed from the legislative session. We, it's basically legislation, legislation without representation. This is where we are right now. So I have no doubt in my mind that there's probably some infiltration that's happened in NACO without, most of us even being aware of it, because we tend to, you know, expect the best out of people. So you're, what, you're right on, I would hire, this legislative session, things are going to get shoved through, there's very little voice, there's very little opposition, because it's so hard to even get into them. So looking at hiring a lobbyist would be a smart idea, a well-versed bulldog. And with legal background, that would be a huge recommendation I would make, because the transparency is absolutely not there, and then things are going to come at us, and it's going to keep Ted busy for the rest of his life, fighting everything that they're going to try to push down into I don't know if NACO has that same situation, but I know infiltration has happened at almost every level. I did 30 years in the school district, and I'm so upset with what's happened in the education system.
We have had a delegate in our legislature that has tried to open that up, and they've kind of shut her down, and she started again. So if you want to give me your email, I give you the information on the signatures to open that up and get it before the legislature again.
I'm just, you guys are, I trust you guys to take care of this, but I would get a lobbyist in Lander County to fight against some of this criticism.
Yeah, that's true.
So on this, is this worded to where if we want to make it come back to us to be, okay?
I understand the coming back, I just don't know where you want to put the rules. I mean, you don't want me coming back at every single thing, so what, what would you? I mean, I consider things that are controversy to come back.
No, there should be no, there should be no vote cast that speaks for us without us having a say in it.
Well, then we're no
You don't know what I'm thinking.
Then we're no good on anything. I mean, you don't, you don't, you don't really mean that, Brian, so much is very mundane.
But I do, but I do, Patsy, how do I know that you think alike on every issue that's going to face this county? You're just saying, you're saying, trust me, Brian, that I have the county's, but it's not, you might have a different view than I do.
Well, I do on a lot of things, but not the things that come before what's best for the county and NACO. There's been a few
Well, just like the Second Amendment, you were okay that they took a neutral stance, and I was like, diehard, no way, that's not okay. I mean, that's a perfect example.
But they're not, they're not a political organization, so to speak, they're doing things for the county, and I understand you're okay.
I'm going to have to, I'm going to stop right there.
But we have to make a guideline, I mean, you don't want me coming back on every single thing.
And I know that they say that they're, that, you know, and, you know, I have had lots of contact with Dagny and appreciate the information and things that she has taught me and showed me. And the one thing where, unfortunately, the hairs get split is with NACO, and I'm, when things came up with the bill's drafts for the resolutions for net proceeds, I could not understand how they could not take a stance on something, let me finish, how, and my thing was right there, as usually, as crazy as I get, well, let's, why don't we do some type of, you know, lawsuit to stop this before it goes any further? And it's not, and a thing that that big, that ended up going into a lawsuit, that I, and I, that there's no stance. And I, that is one of the things I've struggled with, the one that supports this county and the other counties, that there was no, where you can't take a stance, and I just, I, I, I struggle. They're allowed five bills to put through, and I, and how that whole thing works, and they decide which bill, actual bills they're going to do. But when you have something that's so detrimental to counties, and that you say that you don't, you can't take a stance, that's always been one thing in my craw, is that I think that on stuff like, anything like that, it needs to be, to stop any of this in order to keep functioning forward, that this board has a say on what, good, bad, or ugly, about what goes through and what. You're able to say, yes, you know, I think that this is a good idea, because maybe not necessarily. You and I might agree on it, but these three might say, no.
Madam Chair, excuse me for interrupting, because you're doing, you know, you're on a roll, and I apologize. But we're talking about things that maybe encompassed in 19 too, so maybe you should open up 19 along with 17.
All right, so I'll go ahead and let me read. So it says, for discussion regarding possible benefits detriment in Lander County's continued affiliation with NACO, and to take any possible action required. So with that being, I don't want to interrupt you, I just won't remember if I don't. So I have information on the things that NACO does do. I mean, there are things, great things that they do, I'm not going to take that away from them at all on any level. But I think that on something like this, on hot topics, on political topics, that it be brought here and everybody have a say, and that just takes all of this away, because every day, everybody on this board has a say, and
That's the will of the people.
That's
I have one question, I have one question. Is it true that NACO supports Black Lives Matters?
No, I shouldn't.
Well, I want, I know.
I want to know if that's true.
Well, okay, so I've asked that question, because I wanted to know it too. All right, so that, so doing research, because I'm a digger, what that happened, what happened with that, it was they asked a bunch of different people, and Black Lives Matter actually asked a bunch of organizations if they could go speak, giving their conference. So NACO was one of the conferences. So that woman that you see on that video, she goes all to all different huge organizations and gives their speech. Now, I've tried to look and find where they actually support that, and I'm not able, I'm true, I have not been able to find that. They allow them and ask them to come in because they want racial diversity, which that's what we all want. But I wasn't able myself to find where they were a supporter of that, I did not find that. The woman was just a speaker who come and presented, now if I'm wrong and there's more paperwork, then by all means. But I wasn't able, in the hours I spent looking, I wasn't able to find that. So if there's more information, by all means.
And that would never, ever come before anything like that, it isn't. Whether you make a politically correct decision to allow a speaker is certainly a tough decision, I know that.
And that's more than once that they have
But no, there's never been anything on a state level at all.
But would they allow a white supremacist group to come to NACO and make a spiel? Now, that's, that's fair and equitable.
That's a fair question, but whether, if they didn't, then good grief
That's racist.
Well, no, I mean, if they didn't, they would get in trouble, so I think that there's a lot, and this person, this specific person goes to all huge organizations that have to do with the government, and there, and gives those speeches, and what it comes down to is race equality is the way it's put under there. So I want to make sure that even with as anger and as hot as the hot topics this is, that it gets placed where it's at, that they were, they requested to come in and speak, and they were allowed to, they were allowed to speak, as do a lot of other organizations that we might not definitely agree with, so I want to make sure, and I have not, in the hours, I mean, I spent about seven hours trying to because I'm good at, you know, matching the dots, and I was not able to find anything that that woman was just a speaker, and she works for a firm that, you know, teaches racial diversity, which we that, you know, teaches racial diversity, which we need, but the other part, I could not find anything. Hello.
Is that right?
Yeah, go ahead.
Cindy Clark. I am a taxpayer here in Lander County and I am shaking mad.
I'm sorry, Cindy. I can barely hear you.
I said I'm shaken mad because we're involved in something that takes a neutral stance on the Second Amendment. Thank you for not being part of that.
You're welcome.
You, in my opinion, should not be part of that. And to say that there's going to be a personal lawyer hired instead of him, who I voted for, I don't think so.
No, that's, that's not what we're saying. We're allowing, we're allowing counties to, to create a council for the commission if they so choose.
I'm not voting for it.
Well, no.
Take a look at it. Read it for yourself. You're an educated woman.
I know, but I want to keep this calm. Okay, guys? So I think in front of us, what do we want to do? Is it something we want to make the motion that it comes, any vote like that, any stance kind of like that has to come back to this board for a vote?
I don't know why we belong to an organization.
Shouldn't you be voting to get out of it?
Yeah, thank you. I don't know why we belong to an organization that doesn't support our will, the will of the people.
And the Constitution of the United States of America.
Thank you, Cindy.
And an elected official that swore to take an oath to protect and represent the people of Lander County, not Washoe County, not Clark County.
No.
We have fifteen rules. NACO supports the progressive agenda in Nevada. NACO is a tentacle of the governor's office.
Oh, no, no. I, I strongly disagree.
I don't care what you say, Patsy.
That, okay, that is not true. And I wouldn't have any part of that because I personally, of course, support all of that. But the thing is, we've been, we've been members of NACO for seventy-five years. It's a professional association. And I think it does, we've got to have our input with the, with the state and the feds because we're not autonomous. They come down all the time on stuff. And, and I understand what you're saying and I certainly agree with parts of it. But I'm saying I don't want us to cut off our nose to spite our face here because they do promote counties and that's the whole point of it. They find solutions. They give us resources.
When we talked about the Second Amendment resolution and it is on the record, you said, why don't we try to annex Clark County to California? Those were your words. And when I said, why don't you push this, you said, well, there's Democrats in NACO. And you don't represent any other county but Lander County. And if you can't represent the will of the people, wow!
That's what I want to do and that's what we have done.
You didn't, you don't come back to find out what the will of the board is. How can you represent the people?
So can I, can I throw that out, throw this out there? And I, and I, and don't think I don't respect what you guys are saying, because I do. Because I, one of these things again that I toss and turn about and to try to figure out the best. There are things I, I think that they do that are beneficial, but there are things like that that are detrimental. And that one and the one that has to do with the mining tax. So those are detrimental. So I don't, that outweigh the good for the bad because I know there are good things that they do, like try, the things that they try to help us with. And so is it something worth, and I'm just throwing this out there. Is it something worth trying to get the majority of the board's consensus on stuff? Or is it the majority of the board at this time to go, I, we just cut our losses and just move on?
That's the second one. Because both those items you said is not only detrimental, it would destroy Lander County. It would destroy our constitutional rights. It's like, there should be even no discussion about it.
Brian, it will destroy everybody's life in this room if that mining tax goes through. We, we have lived here for, I've been here forty years. This is my home. I'm not going anywhere else. I want to protect Lander County. I, I would like to help Eureka County and Elko County. And I believe that what we do, what we have done, we set the pace in Nevada. We filed the lawsuits. We make the move to move away from NACO. The other counties are going to wake up and go, what the heck did Lander County do? Why did they do this? And when we start talking about what's going on, those other boards are going to realize, oh, my gosh, just like Humboldt County.
I have, I have a question. I, I don't mean to interrupt you. I, I think that the conversation that was had this morning about reopening on May first that we were given is, is very important to this conversation as far as.
We'll ask our county manager about that.
So county manager, you feel comfortable enough with sharing that? Because I, you know, we had this conversation this morning, which was enlightened a little bit, which is very bothersome to me. So, but I want you to go ahead and, if you can.
And it leads you into, it's that, and, and on all this, you write, this Second Amendment thing was last year. And I was like, okay, we had a representative for our state give his, his opinions and thoughts on it. And I was like, okay, you know what? I'm, I'm going to give him the benefit of the doubt. I'm going to, we're going to roll with it. And it's like, as we continue on, I just, there's just more things that I'm hearing than I'm observing that I don't like.
If you continue to roll with it, you know what's going to happen?
Absolutely.
You're going to roll downhill.
And that, that would lead our county manager into him sharing some knowledge he has.
Which is very bothersome.
So, so I want to go, I want to back us up a little bit to a, a few things that, that have kind of brought my ears forward to start this whole thing and, and got the ball rolling, which we've touched on one of them with, with it being for the, for the legal counsel for the county. But the other thing that kind of brought my ears forward is on, on a call with NACO, the comment was made, we have to tread very lightly on how we approach this innovation zones because we don't know who is involved. And to me, I don't feel, I don't feel that that, there's, there's no reason to tread anything lightly if, if you're treading it in truth. You do what's right and you, and, and if you upset a few people in the process, then that's what it is. And that, you know, as each of us have done in the seats that we sit currently. So that kind of pointed my ears a little bit forward of why we are not just standing for what is right to begin with. So then I'm going to move forward to the, the deal that happened with Kathy and, and myself when we, we are on the Legislative Committee for NACO. And in that, they said that they were throwing this one in the can, that it wasn't to be brought back. And that's what.
They were throwing it in the can?
The.
The council.
The county council. The, everybody that was on the line pretty much had, had said, no, we don't want to do it. They were throwing it away. When, when Ted had came into my office and said, they're moving forward with this. I said, no, they aren't. They, they threw that in the trash can. Me and, me and Kathy were on the phone call. They said, okay, we can see there's no support. Threw it away. He's like, nope, you don't have your facts straight. Kind of, kind of, you know, gave me a little hard time. I'm like, I got my facts straight. I was on the call. I know you weren't, right? So I'm pretty confident in my standing and I find out they are supporting it without. So when, when we reached out, that was brought back as, oh, well, if you read the minutes, you would know. Well, with COVID and everything else going on, everybody's well aware that our time is absorbed with, with plenty of stuff to read. And when you are on the phone call that you're supposed to be part of a group that, that's making decisions or knowing what the decisions are going to be made moving forward, you don't bother going into detail of reading that over again. And that led us to where we are now as understanding NACO and what they are to and not to support. But this will bring me back, I'm going to circle back around now to the county when we did not sign the governor's past, present, future mandate for the, the COVID money. NACO had reached out and said, you guys most definitely can get the money. There are no bindings by you guys signing that legally. You guys can still get the money. And all of us went, well, then give us the money. He said, oh, well, you have to sign that. Well, that's, then that's not a true statement. If it has no binding, why would we sign it? It's, it's senseless. But, but it, it brought me to the, the thought of why would they recommend that we can get it with no legal binding, we just have to sign it? Why would we do that?
Let me just interject real quick here, Bert. Then I went to a NACO meeting and I observed Dagny and the commissioners from Lincoln County laughing about the fine print on that money. And that Dagny told Lincoln County, that, that's non-binding. Don't worry about it. Just take the money. But she didn't tell us that, did she?
So, well, no, we, we were told that it was not binding. We were told that it was not binding, but we were told that we still had to sign it. So it's, it's a, you know, it's a double negative there. There, it doesn't make, it's contradicting. But this, this leads me to a phone call that I, that I had last night. And on that phone call, there are other counties that are being told for this Directive 041 and the requirements of our governor, which will be on the next agenda for our county commission to look over the plan that we're putting together to submit. That NACO is telling them, just fill it out as per the thing. You don't really have to put anything that's exactly truth on it. You just have to put a, a reopening plan that kind of mimics what the governor's Directive 041 states. And this is going to go good. You guys are going to open up. It goes back to the exact same thing of just sign, it has no binding. Well, why would you do that? It, it's, it's not, it's not transparent, open, and honest. And, and these are my concerns that I think need to be brought in an open meeting. And, and these, these phone calls that people want to make in my office with my door closed, it's inappropriate. It's not called for, for our people that are voting, for all of you up there. It's not fair to them when they, when they come sit in the audience and think that they have the full story if there's been a phone call that's been made in there. That's why I don't make them. That's why a lot of these, and I have some people upset at the governor's office and other places, because they think that I'm denying them the right to phone call. Absolutely not. Reach out to me anytime by email, by text. We can, we can put it on the record that way so that, so our people know what is happening, open, honestly, and transparent for everyone. We don't have any reason to, to hide anything from anybody. And I don't want to go back into minutes when we have enough stuff to do day to day to make sure that we're standing for what we were told was going to be stood for. And so that's the, in a nutshell, me from start to finish with NACO.
I don't understand. This is the part I don't, I can't wrap my mind about is that, that, that there's being, any advice being given to just sign and we're going to go against regardless. It doesn't matter. I just, I, I struggle with that, that just go ahead and sign and you can have whatever you want by just signing on the dotted line and that I just, I don't understand.
Well, that's the integrity of the organization or the individual.
Why you would be given that information. I, I don't, I don't, I'm.
I can remember when we first discussed this about whether we were going to sign for any conditions. And we said absolutely not. So the question was, how can the governor put conditions? So when I did ask Bert to call Dagny and we talked to them about, how can they do that? And of course, he can do whatever well pleases naturally. Whether it will stand up or not is another story. But that's, that could be a loss of, that would take years to do. So what Dagny went back and asked the national about, and they said, that money is to be released directly from our Treasury Department. And it was voted on by Congress that the Treasury Department pay the state to pass down. But it got to be convoluted and that's why she said, we should be able to get the money. So whether you sign it or not, you still may get the money. Well, we were all so insistent upon it that that's why the new funding under the Rescue Act does come directly. And it's mostly because of not just what happened with our county, but the rest.
I just want to make it real simple. This phone call that Bert's talking is very simple. The governor wants a reopening plan for every county. There's a list of questions that goes like, and I'm just, this might not even be one of the questions. Are you going to continue to wear masks? NACO is taking the position with these other counties saying, just, just say yes, even though if you intend not to. That is an integrity question.
Well, I have a question, but I don't, I don't know. Did Dagny, did Dagny tell you to, to do that? Is that what you're saying?
No, I've not had any correspondence with Dagny on that. It's other counties that, NACO, and I'm not going to put a name to it. It's other counties and county commissioners and I can gather up information and names and have them show up on our next meeting if you would like, that can speak to that.
No, that's okay. I just don't know where it's coming from because it's never come through any of us. So I mean, I, I don't.
Well, that, then it's not. And so on us, with our reopening, we were in, we, you didn't have an email trans thing back and forth and said, just sign and move forward, or you can just move forward anyway. It's with other counties? I want to just make sure.
No, we, we had threats.
Okay, so that's.
Absolutely. And, and guess who was tagged on it? Dagny.
So that's where, that's the, that's kind of.
For what reason? And what purpose is Dagny tagged on our personal conversation with the state representative?
Thank you, Ted, because that's the tentacle of the governor's office again.
Okay, it's not. And I, I think this is very unfair without her to at least give us her side of the story. I mean.
She didn't have a side with reference to our communication with the state representative. She has no side, Patsy.
No, she doesn't. But I mean.
Then why should we listen to it?
Because her side would be perhaps she didn't say those things. I mean.
No, the fact that she's on the, the chain is offensive.
Okay. Well, I don't know what chain she's on, so.
It's confidential information, county and state. Why is a NACO representative part of it? Like, you know, NACO, NACO, NACO. Let's move on. Let's get some motions going.
I, okay, said, yeah, wow. You know, it, I, I would lie, and this is, and I'm just throwing this away, and this is the last thing I, what I'm going to say, is that for the good, bad, or the ugly, if there's something, if they are of benefit and we can make sure everything goes through this board before we cut our losses first, that we at, at least tempt that, that first. And if not, then move forward. But if we can at least try that avenue first, but that's, I would like, I would like that at least, if that's something that can be useful, then then we have the say as a group. Go ahead.
Well, I think you have some legitimate things that need to be straightened out. There's no question about that. But I also don't want to take us.
I do, I do have a question for you, since you're a representative for NACO. Have they advised you in any direction on Directive 041? Because I know that you did make a phone call to me asking what our plan was for reopening.
Right. No, no. We haven't even had it on the agenda. No.
So it's never been discussed in NACO on Directive 041?
No.
So is that the new one that's going to be coming out? Is that what that is that you're talking about 041?
I didn't know about it.
How'd you know about it?
That's the one I was referring to, that Dagny was on the chain and it, and it just boggles my mind.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying. How, how.
She hasn't even discussed it with you. And, and she's on our chain.
How can a communication be given to Bert? Like, what are we doing on this one?
No, I.
I'm not even apprised of it as a commissioner. And how are you? I mean, what, what communications are you having that would enlighten you to?
I, I read the governor's roadmap to recovery.
It's, it's a directive, a governor directive 041.
Okay, okay. So it's something printed that's come out.
Yeah. When I read it, it said, it said all counties have to do this.
No, it doesn't.
Well, basically, that's.
It does not.
Okay. Well, I'll go back and find it. But anyway.
That's the whole challenge. We challenged the state and said, show us.
No, I know that, but because.
But it doesn't say they have to do it. It, it, it says they, if they want to reopen, they will follow the governor's procedure.
Right, right. And because of that, and because we said no, I personally called Bert to see how he was going to handle that, whether we were indeed going to, to try and, and fill out some information for them or ignore them. That's all. And it was just personal. Had nothing to do with NACO whatsoever.
Oh, because you were already aware of.
Because I read this and I wondered what we were going to do. And so I wanted to be sure that he, you know, was on top of this too, and he usually is, and that we were looking at it. That's all.
Okay. I don't know that we've said no to anything yet. I don't.
No, we haven't said no.
We haven't done anything.
Yes, no, no. But I'm referencing, I'm referencing what Patsy just said, was saying no. We've, we have not.
No.
We've, it hasn't been on the agenda yet.
Okay, so.
It will be on the eight, on the eighth.
I just wanted to be sure that he saw it. That's all.
I was simply just asking if you'd had any direction from NACO on 041. That, that was, it was not a targeted question. It was just.
Haven't discussed it with anyone. You were the only one.
Okay.
So is, can this, I'm just going to throw this out here. And I, and I, and I, I understand, I respect where you guys are coming from. Can we do, try for one year, the, making it come back to us? See how the representation that way is working? And if not, then we be done? Or six months or what?
Really? With all the testimony we've heard here today, I, I don't.
And I know, and I know.
I don't, I don't think we should belong to the organization. Why would we support an organization that doesn't support us 100% wholeheartedly and is completely transparent? It's like, it's like being in bed with the devil. I mean, it's like.
I, I just want to make.
I have no interest in it whatsoever. That's, that's my personal opinion as a single commissioner.
Do we have to?
Make a motion. Somebody has to make.
Okay. Do we have to make a motion on eighteen first or we got nineteen open?
If you, if you make a motion on nineteen, Arthur, then, then, then any motion on seventeen, is there a?
No, okay.
So I get, and this is, you know, this saddens me. It's, but I, I get it and I understand and I totally respect that that it's come down to this. it's come down to this and that there's not more. And you're, and I know that on these issues, you guys are right and it, it saddens me, but I know that you're right. But, go ahead, whoever's gonna make the motion.
I'll make a motion that we turn your speaker. Withdraw our membership with NACO.
Complete disaffiliation.
Effective, yeah, whenever, as soon as...
Effective immediately.
Yeah.
Okay.
Based on the testimony presented.
I'll second that.
Brian made the motion and Art second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
Opposed? Did you vote opposed?
Nay.
Let's get Bert to flag.
All right, take a break.
This will now be recorded.
Eighteen, cause we missed eighteen. All right, let's get back to getting this finished up. All right, we're gonna go to eighteen for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove or amend the lease agreement with the Battle Mountain Airport hangars.
So, I would just like to let you guys know that I did get the numbers back from Freddie Wagner on what it's gonna cost to put individual power meters on all four of them buildings back out there. And it's gonna cost us about $10,961.86 to be exact.
So, this is where, this is where I'm at. I, I did, I, I had a, a meeting with Mr. Peterson. Put some thought to it. I had no idea that we hadn't really had any rent record with those buildings at our $400 rate. And then we talked about putting individual meters in each one and I, I figured it was gonna come back at an expense like that. It's like, it's, it's already a losing proposition. I mean, it's, we've got so much money into it, they're not being rented. Why would we continue and put another $10,000 into it? I just think we need to be at the line of rents that we're going to have interest and people are going to be in there renting and at least get some income. That's, that's what I think. I'm not in favor of spending another $10,000 to just to increase the total over all production cost of those hangars.
How, how do you get electric there if you need to plug your motor in to keep it warm?
Oh, they, they have that there. We just don't have individual power meters.
Right.
So, we don't, aren't sure what each hangar is using as far as power. That's, that's why there was a flat $50 fee that was put on the...
Oh, oh, okay.
So, I guess you guys just need to make a motion on what you guys would like to set the, the fees at.
Somebody wants to throw something out as far as setting if...
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll take a stab at that. I think that, I'll make a motion to approve the lease agreement for the Battle Mountain Airport hangars with an adjustment on the fee from $400 a month to $200 a month.
Currently, currently, we have not updated the contract that you have. It is currently at 300 from the previous meeting. It's, yes, so, so we have to amend this once we make a final decision.
Let me, let me amend my, my motion. I'm gonna cut that in half. My motion is to approve and amend the lease agreement for the Battle Mountain Airport hangars. Specifically, the fee for renting a hangar from $300 to $150 a month. Cut it in half.
I'll second that motion.
And then what are we going to do with the, is that, and then the $50 utilities to go on that, so we'd be at a total of 200?
200.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, let me reamend. And then a $50 electric fee would be put onto the 150. So, that would be $200 a month with electricity.
All right, so Art made the motion, Patty second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. All right. So, for the...
Do we need to make, do we need to make that for the chair to sign?
Yes.
Oh.
And my motion, amended again, for the chair to sign.
Second amendment.
Okay, yes, yeah, yeah. All right, so we're good to move forward?
Yes.
So, all right, for Lander County Sheriff's to cut discussion and possible action regarding federal mandates related to E9111 phone system reporting budgeting consideration FY 2020, 2021-2022 for upgrading the current county VOIP system to comply with those mandates and rolling monies related to project F, F8-9 fiscal year 2020 to 2021. All right.
So, what's this all about?
How much money you want this time, Robert?
Good morning. Robert Quick for the sheriff's office. I would just wanna provide you a briefing on the voice-over IP phone upgrade system that you approved for this fiscal year. You've already approved the rollover of the money to next fiscal year with an increase based on this information. I just couldn't get it into the budget agenda before it was timed, so I still wanted to provide you the update. So, essentially, there is an, a federal law requiring an update to our voice-over IP system relating to 911 and what it does is, it requires them to be able to provide a exact location of somebody calling 911 as opposed to a main number or building number. So, there is software enhancement that has to be done to our current system. Not sure operationally how that will affect us next year when we actually move forward with it. But it will provide the sheriff's office dispatch with an exact location of the phone that called.
Some of the tie-in like, it's GPS, basically.
Essentially. They, currently, we have a workaround for it that we utilize at the sheriff's office that we had in place. But this is a, a software addition to the system that's required by federal law. Because we are upgrading our system and adding the six buildings for the, the benefit of Commissioner Thomas, we are adding six buildings to the voice-over IP system for the county. Two in Austin, the courthouse and the sheriff's office, and then four up here. And so, as, as long as the commission still wishes to move forward with that, that's, are still our intent to add those buildings to the voice-over IP system. The only thing that wasn't included in the, in the request on the budget side for the upgrade was programming costs related to the current system that Quest will have to do to parse out things for the voice-over IP system. I don't have a number at all for that because it's contracted pricing and I plan on working with Bert and potentially using the computer line for that programming that they'll have to do.
Are these unfunded federal mandates, or are we getting some money from the feds to help us with this or not?
Uh, this is an absolutely unfunded federal mandate unless you wanted to impose an additional tax for the 911 surcharge, which the, the commission has already elected not to do. There will be an increase to the maintenance costs on the contracts as well because of this mandate. So, that will again get with Bert on the increases to those contracts that, that'll have to take place. The question I have for you really is what direction you want me to go as far as implementing this? So, you've rolled the money and increased it July 1st. However, you are implementing a new IT person which will have to be incorporated or work with the Quest in, in, to get things programmed into the county infrastructure. Do you want me to wait until you get that person in place so they have a full knowledge of what's in those, other than the two sheriff's office responsibility buildings, the four other buildings, so they know what the configuration and how to support those buildings and... Or do you want me to move forward and they'll have to catch up?
Bert.
I was reading, I was reading...
Having the...
I was reading an email, I apologize.
The hire, how far out is the, the county IT person?
Uh, July 1 is when we will, unless the commission would like me to try to hire before then. But that's when we have the, that actual position transferred, the title of that position transferred. We can do that before then and use the safety with, so we can, we can start advertising as soon as possible. Yes.
Well, the money for the actual project is July 1 and the company that we're gonna go with is ready to move forward. With the exception of one other thing of some of the equipment that they initially proposed for the wireless phones for those locations are end of life and they don't have a date from the manufacturer of when they're gonna be producing those. If we move forward and did it and then went back and added those, there's an expense that I'm not willing to, you know, have the county incur for that. So, if you did move forward with the IT person, they could potentially get up to speed by the July 1 and we'll have a much better idea.
So...
Yeah, so I do have the money in my budget to do it now. It's just, just a matter of title.
Okay.
Would you probably, would you have to agendize that?
So, does it have to be agendized to move forward, do now, for the next meeting? Can we agendize that, or does it have to be agendized?
I, I believe we could use your guys' approval during budget for that to be moved over as, as the approval to advertise for that now and just use the money that's within my budget.
Okay.
Yes. Can we give approval during this item, Ted?
You already gave approval during...
Okay.
Okay, okay. So, you just need to move forward.
Hire forward on the Ted guy so that they're prepared for this.
Yes, and we'll put that in your motion during the hiring process. When you, when we get there, you guys could approve that.
Okay.
During, uh, who gets hired?
Yes.
Comes back.
So, I guess if, if, unless you have additional questions or you have one, make any changes to the buildings that we originally looked at, either add or delete or something, then, I mean, that was, that's essentially it. Because you've already approved the, to move forward on the funding, so... I just wanted to make sure everybody had a kind of an update of where we were at with that.
So, with, with the addition of the new phone systems and all, then we also, it, it goes with the multi-system that anyone can dial 911 without dialing the outside line first, right? That's part of it?
Uh, that's opposed, that is part of that requirement. Um, I do not know how that's gonna affect the phone system functionality at this point because currently we have to hit nine to get an outside line. I think we may end up having to hit a different number to get an outside line beyond 911. I don't have that information yet for the functionality, but yes, the mandate is, if they dial 911, it's 911. There's no outside line.
So, you don't need an action being taken today?
I do not anymore, no.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So, for the buildings, the possible action to approve, disapprove, one of the following proposed for the Lander County Courthouse Administration Building Fire Sprinkler System.
Excuse me. Madam Chair, do we have to vote on 20 or not?
No.
No?
No action, you can...
We're okay, we're okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
It says possible action, so...
Yeah.
We, we thought there was.
We're okay.
But we're okay.
So, for, let me start that. A possible action to approve, disapprove, one of the following proposed proposals for the Lander County Courthouse Administration Building Fire Sprinkler Systems. Overhead protection in the amount not to exceed $1,115 annually recommended by the building department and supported by the county manager. Then delta in the amount not to exceed $5,710 annually.
Anna Panola with the building department, this was, this, you already had this before you, it just had changed the language to a two-year with an exit clause in the contract.
All right, very good.
So, I'll make a motion, we approve the proposal for the Lander County Courthouse and Administration Building Fire Sprinkler System and to award overhead fire protection in the amount not to exceed $1,115 annually.
I do have a second.
I'll second it.
All right. Brian made the motion, Patty second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, Anna.
Thanks. The correspondence reports future agenda items. So, I have a request for, to bring back a resolution totally outlining the issues that we have with NACO. And why, if, if that's something we have to do, so we can outline the reasoning why, why...
Why do we need a resolution?
Well, I don't know. I was just...
Commissioner, that wouldn't be appropriate since we're technically not a part of NACO.
Okay, all right, I didn't know. I was just...
But you can certainly, i- if you're asking for something to get us back into NACO.
Oh, yeah, no, that's not, no, no. I was just asking that, do we, is it good to have a, a resolution that puts it out there exactly all of the issues?
We don't need to ask their permission.
Oh, no, I wasn't thinking about asking their permission.
It's, it's an organization.
Okay, all right.
And that, we don't have the contract back up. I'm, I'm gonna read the contract. And if, if there's any problems we have with that,
Okay.
we'll agendize that, refer it to the contract.
All right, very good.
It'll just be a membership.
All right, go ahead.
I think, it's just a membership, I don't know that we're contracted.
Well, there's members, there are, they do this for us and it's a contract, whether it's a membership or not. Every membership is a contract.
I think we probably should, we should address or look at hiring an aggressive lobbyist firm to represent us in all issues.
State issues?
State issues, yes, exactly. That has a strong legal background. At least have discussion about it. What, I mean, is that, is the appetite of the board to make sure we have representation?
And, and we do currently have lobbyists that, you know, we're paying $15,000 a month, but...
But that represents us on a state?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying, we, we may look at, I don't know if you guys would like it worded this way to, to incorporate. So, we're only paying one lobbyist firm.
Yeah, if that person's capable of that.
You, you know, I mean, a lot of them have multiple people in, under one thing that do, bunch everything together, so it's...
That's the interest is to represent us on state issues. So, if that includes them and we have one that, that's, the same one reps, represents federally and state, I'm fine with that. I'll just leave it to you to, and Ted and...
We'll put a request for qualifications out and we'll, we'll put something together and bring it back.
Qualifications of our current lobbyist?
Yes.
Because I believe he has a, a state office there.
I agree.
And we might just be, we may not even have to send out a, a thing, since we already have that service, we can just present it to you and see what you wanna do.
You bet.
Or you, so at that point, you can decide, well, let's, let's check further into, to more people, whatever you wanna do.
All right.
For discussion of possible action.
So, we'll just see what's available.
So, any more agenda items? So, we have any public comment?
Well, we have the, we're gonna be addressing the governor's directive 041. Yep, our reopening, our reopening plan will be, will be addressed. I had that to add to it and I don't know if we had much else.
Okay.
All right, so then, so any public comment? All right, so do we have a motion?
Motion, motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, Brian made the motion, Pierre second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.